I'll call to order the Tuesday, May 3, 2022 Town Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:38. Clerk McCauser.
Yes, it looks like we have everybody here, all councilors present, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yes, yes, welcome.
Thank you. We'll now stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
For which stands my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Onto recognitions, awards, and memorials. We have two. First, a proclamation honoring Annabelle Schaefer. Counselor Parker?
Proclamation recognizing Annabelle Schaefer, whereas since 1916, Girl Scouts have accepted the challenge of earning the movement's highest award, thereby demonstrating a commitment to bettering themselves, their communities, and the world. And whereas Annabelle has been a Girl Scout since the age of five when she joined Daisy Scouts, gaining experience in helping the community and receiving the Bronze, Silver, and Gold Awards. And whereas those who have earned this distinction have shown the same outstanding leadership skills, determination, and resilience that have made the Girl Scouts' highest award a unique rite of passage for young women across the movement. And whereas Annabelle worked diligently to create the Sustainable Outreach Program, knitting towards a better future, to benefit the most vulnerable in our community by supplying hygiene items and hand-knitted bags to the homeless population, now therefore be it resolved that the Grotton Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Grotton, does hereby commend Annabelle Schaefer for achieving the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest rank in Girl Scouting, and extends wishes for continued success, dated at Grotton, Connecticut, this third day of May 22nd, signed by the mayor of town of Grotton, Juan A. Melendez Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another for a proclamation honoring Theodore Ted Hespler Sr. Counselor Baumgartner?
Proclamation recognizing Ted Hespler Sr. Whereas Ted began volunteering his time with Grotton Little League in 1961 and continued for 65 years. And whereas Ted first began coaching the Paquannic Bridge Little League, now known as Grotton Little, uh, Grotton Town Little League, and playing at Calvin Burrows Field, where he also helped build the press box and concession stand. And whereas Ted coached a few teams and won several championships, but was also known for being the head coach of the Elks and concluding his coaching career with three first-place finishes in a row, 2004, 2005, and 2006. And whereas Ted built the first batting cage in Grotton located at Sutton Park and was able to coach all of his children and grandchildren, never showing favoritism to his family, always promoting teamwork and personal determination to all of his players. Now therefore be it resolved that the Grotton Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Grotton, does hereby congratulate and thank Ted Hespler for his steadfast service to the youth of Grotton and the sport of baseball, dated at Grotton, Connecticut, this third Tuesday of May 2022, signed by the mayor of town of Grotton.
Thank you. All right, onto the public hearings. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@grotton-CT.gov by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. If you plan to speak in person, you'll be able to sign up at the meeting. I have the papers in front of me, but if someone else wants to speak and they haven't signed up yet, just let Clerk McCauser know and we can get you another piece of paper to sign. So we'll begin with the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant. Clerk McCauser, do you have to open the public hearing?
Will you open the public hearing and I'll read the, or the, if I can find it.
Okay.
So you recess the council meeting and then open the public hearing.
Okay.
And then, and I'll read the call and if there's anyone to speak, they speak.
Okay. So the council meeting will be recessed at 6:42 and...
Okay, and I'll read the call.
Okay.
Town of Grotton, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the town of Grotton will conduct a public hearing for the town council on May 3, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. at Thrive 55 Active Center 102 Newtown Road, Grotton, Connecticut, 06340, to discuss the fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant program and to solicit citizens' input.
Betty, they can't hear you. I've done hearing.
No one can hear me?
No.
Well, I don't know if it's on or not.
It just, the mic was too far.
Oh, wow. Usually I'm, they tell me to be quiet. So the major activity categories are acquisition housing rehabilitation, public housing modernization, community facilities, public services, and economic development. Projects funded with the CDBG grant allocation must carry out at least one of the three national objectives: benefit to low and moderate income persons, eliminate slums and light, or meeting urgent community development needs. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' views on the town's community development and housing needs and review and discuss the project scope of the town, the town's new acquisition for funding for the year 2022. In addition, the town's current 2019 Small Cities Grants, a public housing modernization project at Mystic River Homes, will be discussed to obtain citizens' input on it. You will be able to attend, if you are able to attend the public hearing, you may desire written, you could send in written comments to the town council office or the Office of Planning and Development Services. That's at 134 Grotton Long Point Road, Grotton, Connecticut, 06340. Or you may telephone, and there's a number, 860-446-5990. In addition, information may be obtained at the above address between hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. on weekdays, oh, no weekends. The Office of Planning and Development Services, on behalf of town of Grotton, anticipates applying for the maximum grant amount of $2 million under public housing modernization to renovate buildings at Grasso Gardens and Grasso Housing, uh, Grotton Housing Authority property. The town of Grotton promotes fair housing and makes all programs available to low and moderate income households, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender, identity, or expression, marital status, age, lawful source of income, family status, learning disabilities, or physical, mental disabilities, or sexual orientation. All are encouraged to attend. The hearing is accessible to handicap. Any disabled persons requiring special assistance or non-English speaking persons should contact Arneisha Green, the ADA coordinator, at 860-441-6622, at least five days prior to the hearing. This was run, excuse me, this was published in the New London Day on the 19th of April and also on the 28th of April, as required.
Thank you. Now, I don't have anyone currently signed up to speak, so if anyone in the room would like to speak on this...
That's the Small Cities, the Small Cities Grant, is it? No, no, okay. You're gonna do, you're going for the neighborhood. Oh, that's, that's, that's not, no. So that would be our regular citizens petitions. So it's okay. We'll, we'll take, well, I can take your name.
Yeah.
Maybe we should announce this.
Okay. So does anybody want to speak on the Small Cities Block Grant?
Nobody here to talk about it.
Okay. Seeing none.
Did you check the online? We have to check, there might be somebody, I see a hand up, there might be someone that wants to speak.
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me?
You have to call for them, too.
Okay. I'll just speak very quickly on this because I want to speak on these other things.
I just need your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of all these programs that are helping the people who have the least ability to get through to us. And I, I'm speaking with my RTM hat off right now. But that doesn't mean that I haven't looked at the budget. And it seems to me the budget, and especially the ARPA funds on which I'll speak later, but it's very much skewed towards a sort of middle class, upper class. And that the people who don't have as much of a voice, and I may sound like I'm Councilor Boarder Law saying this, but the people that don't have much of a voice are not enough represented in what we're doing here. So this, this, this project here is excellent, in my opinion. We should be doing lots more of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have your address for the record?
Oh, sorry. Sixth Pearl Street, Mystic. Genevieve Surf is my name.
Excuse me, Mayor, did you get the list of online for people for different?
Yep.
Okay.
There's none for this.
She was there for ARPA?
Yep. Okay. Anyone else for Small Cities Block Grant? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public, public hearing at 6:48.
Get a little louder, please.
We'll close the public hearing at 6:48. Okay. So you open the next one, right?
Oh, you open all of them. I read, I read it, but you open.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing for...
Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Neighborhood Assistance Act 2022.
At 9:49.
Nine, uh, 6:49.
6:49. I'm sorry. Okay, I'll read the public notice. Town of Grotton, just noticed, notice is hereby given that the town of Grotton will conduct a public hearing for the town council on May 3, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. at Thrive 55 Active Center 102 Newtown Road, Grotton, Connecticut, 06340, to solicit public input on the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals. They're, they're read as Bill Memorial Library has submitted a 2022 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, that's an NAA proposal. The proposal is, is for installing energy-conserving replacement windows at a cost of $115,000. Community of Hope has submitted a 2022 NAA proposal. The proposal is for energy conservation measures, including heating and cooling system upgrades, roof solar, rooftop solar, insulation, windows at the cost, and that is at the cost of $160, $36,000, excuse me, $136,000. The Oddfellows Home of Connecticut, Inc., doing business as Fairview, has submitted a 2022 NAA proposal. The proposal is for installing energy-efficient air cooling units at the cost of $5,869. Riverfront Children's Center has submitted a 2022 NAA proposal. The proposal is for energy-efficient roof replacement at a cost of $142,500. Sacred Heart School has submitted a 2022 NAA proposal, and that proposal is for energy-efficient roofing, roofing upgrades, and the purchase of an energy-efficient tractor for a total of $144,829. This was published in the New London Day on April 28, 2022. All of these published, were published on our website also.
Thank you. Okay, first on my list, I have Dr. Kingston. Just need your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Does they say he? Oh.
No, we're gonna start with Dr. Kingston.
Mayor and Town Council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Is that okay? Okay. Hey, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm the principal of Sacred Heart School. Sacred Heart School has been in Grotton since 1957, so we've served the student, children here for 64 years. And we also use, the facility is used by Alcoholics Anonymous and basketball teams around the area, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and Icy Columbus. We desperately, the roof is over 25 years old, so we definitely need an energy-efficient roof because it's leaking. And also, energy-efficient tractor would replace our present mower and also our, our snow blower, which is also over 16 years old. So that's what our grant's for. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Michelle Dean.
Good evening. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Riverfront Children's Center. We're a nonprofit early childhood education center and care facility that provides services to 120 children from Grotton and beyond. We are truly an inclusive center, offering a sliding scale fee structure, so that means all families are welcome at Riverfront, even those who, who need significant tuition subsidies. Our services are essential to local families with young children and the businesses who employ working, who employ our working parents. Our mission to serve the unique needs of each of our children and families expands our services beyond childcare. We offer groceries from our onsite food pantry, gently-used clothes, hygiene supplies, including diapers and wipes, and referrals to social services when appropriate. To say that we serve as a lifeline to struggling families would not be an overstatement. In order to continue our important work in the community, we need to ensure that our campus remains a safe and welcoming place for our families. In recent years, we have upgraded windows, doors, lights, and insulation, all in the name of energy efficiency. These upgrades have enhanced our campus and reduced the cost of running our physical plant. This year, we're asking the committee to consider our request for $142,500 to support replacing our failing roof with an energy-efficient, long-lasting, low-maintenance roof system. This roof will increase the insulation value of our buildings. It will prevent moisture from penetrating the building, and it will set the stage for a future solar array, as the roofing is solar-ready. We appreciate your consideration and look forward to partnering with you and our community to support local families of babies and young children.
Thank you. Next, I have Wendy Connell.
Is she online?
Is she online? Wendy Connell?
Yeah, I have my hand up again.
Okay, thank you. One second. Okay, not seeing Wendy Connell. Genevieve Surf?
Yeah, I'll just speak very briefly. I've been on the Community Services Committee, and when I see all these wonderful organizations that help our people all over town who normally wouldn't have these kind of resources, I, my heart really melts. I love to see this. And anything that we can do to help them out makes me have a really good night's sleep. So I'm very much in favor of these kind of grants, and I hope we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm out of names for Neighborhood Assistance, but if anybody else wants to speak, approach the, raise your hand online or approach the podium. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:56. All right, we'll open the public hearing on ARPA Fund input at 6:56.
Okay, there was a publication, a display ad in the New London Day on the 28th of April. It read, "Attention Grotton residents, Grotton Town Council will conduct a public hearing to solicit public input on the recovery bucket established to allocate American Rescue Plan funds. All residents are encouraged to complete the Budget Simulator," which there was a web address link, "to familiarize themselves with the American Rescue Plan and the current proposed allocations of the AARP, ARAP, oh boy, ARPA funds." This will be Tuesday, the, May 3, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. at Thrive 55, in quotations, Senior Center at 102 Newtown Road, Grotton, Connecticut. And for more information on this request, contact Kevin Fitzgerald, and his phone number is 860-446-5976.
Thank you. First on my list, I have Christine Bradley.
Good evening. I'm Chris Bradley. I reside at 38 West Main Street in Grotton, and I'm also Director of the Mystic and Noang Library. I'm here to speak to two of the buckets, Parks and Recreation and Arts and Culture. COVID really affected library operations of all of the libraries. We were forced to adjust to serve the public during the worst event. And as a direct result of the pandemic, we are now planning to transform our grounds by contracting for a master plan for a library park. We learned during COVID...
Yes.
Oh, what?
Thank you.
I wonder what that was.
Can I keep going?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
We, we learned during COVID that we have to be more adaptable in the future, and we want to provide a much-needed open space in the midst of our fully-developed downtown Mystic area. The library is embarking on this master plan under its own volition and funding. But we would love to partner with the town through ARPA to make the improvements that we look to make that much better for all the residents of Grotton. Last summer, we moved almost all of our children's summer reading programs outdoors. We did crafts on picnic tables, and we had storytimes under a tree. This summer, we will expand and continue to use those outdoor spaces for both children and adults. The problems that we expect the master plan to address are ways to make those spaces accessible and more usable for environmental education. We did a community input survey this past winter to see in what direction people wanted us to go. No surprise, they want additional flexible outdoor activity spaces with level areas accessible for both library programs and passive recreation. The Mystic Noang Library has been around since 1893. The building is a treasure for everyone to use. With the master plan for a library park, we hope to transform the library's grounds into the treasure that they can become. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, I have Margie Gookins.
Margie Gookins, 26, Daniel Brown Drive, Mystic. Good evening. For full disclosure, I have to tell you, I'm Commissioner Franco's mother, and I'm also a commissioner on the CDEP committee. Tonight, I'm speaking as a citizen, a taxpayer, and a voter in Grotton. I watch every town council meeting, and I recently noticed a recurring theme of asking for public hearings on numerous topics coming forward. This seems to be a way for some of you to decide how to cast your votes. You are elected to represent all Grotton, even those who do not come to speak at citizens' comments and public hearings. So here I am to tell you that I trust the town manager, the town staff, and all of you, as well as Paige Bronk and Kevin Fitzgerald, who have worked long and hard on the behalf of the town and its residents in regards to the ARPA funding and the community input in the matter. When topics are brought to you in packets and a wealth of information, they should be discussed, and you should formulate a reasonable decision as to what is best for our town. I and many residents in town do not feel that we have to come to a meeting to speak on trivial topics on your agenda, such as buckets. Tonight, I'm here because you spent over an hour and a half discussing buckets and are holding a public hearing on the topic. The verbiage "buckets" is nothing more than an accounting system, just like in your personal life. You put away monies to pay for your rent, your utilities, your loans, et cetera. Naming buckets is no different. Buckets are simply categorizing monies to be spent. I don't believe you need people to take time out of their lives to come here and tell you how to manage an accounting system, unless you don't understand your homework. The sad part is, the town didn't need the council's approval to set this accounting system up. They were simply trying to keep you informed and to gain your approval. I also see that there will be a discussion tonight regarding the potential of hiring a mediator to assist the council. Some of you may benefit greatly with a new perspective on professionalism and learn best practices on how to work as a team. I would be in favor of this money being spent if the outcome would help ease the dysfunction on the council, which is quite evident. With that being said, I want to thank each of you for your service to our town, and with that, have a great night.
Thank you. Next, I have Ian Thomas.
Good evening. Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive in Grotton. Speaking on the ARPA situation, I just want to say that I do appreciate having a public hearing on this information to present what's out here, what we have organized so far, and to give the people a chance to speak. The town council is an interactive body, and I think it functions best when it is held in such a manner. The, um, the issues that were, surround this, this concerns, these concerns, have to do more with like, ARPA monies, you know, being discussed and allocated in various ways. You know, this bucket system is an organizational system. It's been in development for well over a year, year and a half now, that the Long Term Recovery Meeting Committee was meeting and discussing things. Now, this idea was percolating, but it was, had yet to be officially presented to the public. So as with most other plans with the town, there's an opportunity to present that to the public and hear some feedback for any other, further adjustments that may be needed. It's not a huge deal, but it's also a very significant and important deal to, to have as part of the process. Ideally, I would have liked to seen a public hearing like this earlier in the process, perhaps incorporated into the Long Term Recovery Committee meetings. You know, some way to, to further engage the public on this matter. Long story short, I am, I do like the organization system. I think the buckets are arranged well, and I would encourage you all to look, you know, towards the human services, the arts and culture, parks and recreation, things that have direct impact. You know, with economic development and things like that, it can be, you definitely keep a critical eye on anything that's going in that bucket or is going to be arranged underneath that, because, you know, those things can have a longer shelf life and can take longer to, to have the seeds grow, and you want to be sure that you're, you're investing those monies well. Moreover, I would have just liked to seen this discussion happen prior to the budget discussion that started allocating ARPA funds already, incorporating the budget. Speaking as a citizen and as an RTM member who's not deliberating the budget, you know, it's frustrating to see certain allocations already kind of, you know, foisted upon us without much input or a chance for discourse prior to. So again, it seems like kind of the cart before the horse type situation, which we'll circle back to a subject I'll discuss in, under Citizens Petitions, about due process and how important it is to have a transparent, accountable, accessible, and predictable method of doing things that people can know and see and follow along and participate where necessary and proper, and then allow you all to do your deliberations and come to your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Roseanne Katsowski. You're muted if you're speaking. You're muted if you're speaking. Okay, we'll circle back. Next, I have Genevieve Surf.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Genevieve Surf, 6 Pearl Street, Mystic, Connecticut. And I won't be as generous in this public hearing as I was in the other two. I'm frankly rather appalled by the outcome of the allocation of these ARPA funds. I nearly dropped out of my chair at the RTM meeting where I saw that we were going to allocate $400,000 for bathrooms for the golf course. If this doesn't make us the laughingstock of all of Connecticut, if not the world, I don't know what will. So I don't want to be too disparaging because I know that everybody works hard at stuff. By the time I... By the way, I had a really hard time with the website when I tried to do my input today. In fact, it came up by mistake with a password in one of my boxes I was supposed to fill out, which I'm sure is what the Town of Groton password. So that's a major security breach. At any rate, it's all well and fine to have these buckets, but people don't seem to understand that these funds were given to us to remedy any business that was lost during ARPA, families that might have been in greater need, things like that. I mean, I saw some of these comments on the website, you know, add streetlights to illuminate all of River Road. Well, I'm on River Road all the time. I love River Road. I'm there at night sometimes. But ARPA funds should not go to illuminating River Road. That is, you know, it's kind of like a public works project, same in these golf course things. Too much of this stuff was foisted onto these ARPA funds. You know, fix the drainage issues at Porcana Plain Park. Not a COVID issue. Mold Mystic Information Vehicle, yes. Tax relief, no. I mean, well, that's kind of iffy because some families obviously could use some tax relief. I saw some really nice ones. A few people finally had the idea to help, you know, to help people in need. But make the Avery Monument a true park, no. Climate change mitigation, yes. I mean, there are stuff that you can seize, obviously, things that we really need and things that would benefit the community and things that, you know, somebody sees this, what we did, they will not lock us out of business. We're already having enough problems with that. So when I see on the manager's presentation to us, you know, there's a Porcana Bridge traffic light. Well, no, that is not a COVID issue. Sidewalk improvements, not really a COVID issue. Community bike plan, definitely a COVID issue because the more recreation we have, the more we get people outside, the more we can save on emissions, yes. That is justifiable. Study of the Groton Golf Course, $260,000. That is not a COVID-related issue in any way, shape, or form. That golf course is in pretty good shape. I don't know what's wrong with the bathrooms, but I mean, the idea of spending $455,000 on golf course bathrooms in addition to the study, which is $260,000. I mean, we're getting close to $1 million alone out of 8 million just for the golf course. That, oh, and $25,000 for the clubhouse. That totally doesn't work for me. And believe me, there are a couple of other people that I know of on the RTM who had the same reaction. Absolutely, you know. Town facilities improvement, no. You know, public library windows, yes, because everybody used the library during COVID. You know, gateway finding sign project, that helps Mystic. What I would have liked to have seen, you know, is more of an effort for small businesses. I don't really see anything in here for small businesses that might have been hurt by COVID, which they certainly were. What happened to all our great economic development fan club here? You know, that you didn't help the one thing that in America is so important to keeping us vital and helping the middle class and everything else, which are small businesses. I'm sure lots of them suffered. Why is there absolutely nothing in here? You know, part of the problem, and I think the lady who spoke first was wrong when she said that you don't need the input from the public. I think you do need the input from the public. And I think not enough input for the right kind of public was obtained here. I don't see where anybody went through, like say, you know, I never knew there were so many trailer parks in Groton, for instance, when I used to drive for Wheels on Wheels under the aegis of the wonderful late George Swift, who very few people here will probably remember, except Betsy. I used to go to trailer parks to pick up people.
Thank you.
And I could not believe...
Your term has expired. Thank you.
Okay, how destitute some of them were. These are the people that we need to help. So I'm really asking you to please revisit this and not make it look like a public... We're taking all our money to alleviate our budget because that's what it looks like right now.
Thank you. Thank you. I see Shontay Duzan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shontay Duzan. I reside at 20 Nathan Hill. And I would like to also address the ARPA grant for the city of Groton. So Genevieve, I hope I'm saying that right, she echoed a lot of my sentiments in being able to isolate some of these projects that should not be, in my personal opinion. And I think, to be honest, in the opinion of the people that gave us this grant for COVID, we should not be considering using that funding for infrastructure, for bathroom golf courses. I think, you know, that is a job for plumbers, not for money that was given to us because of the pandemic. If we stop for a second and think back, this pandemic affected this whole world. And what were the things that were directly impacted from COVID? It was not bathrooms at golf courses and so many other things that are being suggested that we use the money for. People's lives were lost, jobs were lost. Children were impacted severely. They have been socially isolated. I work in a school, not in Groton, and I can tell you that the social skills are not there anymore. They're not sure how to conversate, what to say. Their mental health has been impacted. And, you know, along these lines, people have lost their jobs. Low-income people are struggling also to provide, to survive. And not to mention the residents that were affected by loss of income from COVID that are still trying to get on their feet. So I'm urging the council to think about using this fund and to think about the question of who and what was directly impacted from COVID to guide us in making the decisions of where these funds should be used and allocated. And when thinking about that question, how can we remedy this? How can we fix and make our youth more active, more social? How can we provide more assistance to residents that don't have an income or that need more income because of loss of income? How can we help seniors? Seniors were also severely impacted by COVID as well. I am new to be, to this committee and this whole, you know, council. I'm a new member of the Groton Town Committee as well as the Permanent School Building Committee, and so I'm learning some of the ins and outs of this. So I hope that I am giving enough information. I hope that if, you know, you have any questions, please reach out to me. And I also do want to say that we should always remember that we are here, and this is the reason why I became involved recently, is I'm here to represent the residents that are not always so represented. I am a minority. I am low-income. And I have realized after a very long time that there are a lot of things impacting me that I, now by joining and by being involved, I have a say, I have a voice, and that's what this is all about. And so I am here as that person, as a resident, as a mom whose kids go to school in Groton, who have suffered in many different ways from the pandemic. And I am here to say that we need to think about the residents that were affected by COVID in every single way first before we think about using any money for infrastructure. If there is money left over from this ARPA fund, by all means, you know, we could have another public hearing about it. But this money should solely be allocated for the purpose of residents affected from COVID.
Thank you.
And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Roseanne Katuski, do you wish to speak at this public hearing?
He indicated that she had received her answer.
Okay, thank you. So that's the end of the list that I have. So if anybody in the room would like to speak at this public hearing, please approach the podium. If anybody online, please raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:19. And to open up the public hearing, introduction of an ordinance changing and redefining voting districts at 7:19.
Okay. Town of Groton, Notice of Public Hearing on Proposed Ordinance to Amend Voting District Boundaries. Notice is hereby given that the town council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 3, 2022, at 6:30 PM at Thrive 55 Living Center, formerly Groton Senior Center, 102 Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut, 06340. In the main room, on the following proposed ordinance, ordinance changing and redefining the voting districts of the Town of Groton. The following is a summary description, ordinance changing and redefining the voting district in the Town of Groton. The full text of the ordinance, including the meets and bounds descriptions of the proposed new districts and a map showing the existing and the proposed new district lines is available on the Groton Town website and that address, and at the Groton Town Clerk's Office, 45 Fort Hill Road, 06340. The proposed ordinance includes legal descriptions and the proposed revised boundaries of the town's voting districts in which the ordinance would revise and conform to the 2021 Plan of Congressional Districting approved by the State of Connecticut Supreme Court on February 10, 2022, and published by the Secretary of the State Secretary of the State on February 10, 2022, and to enact other changes to be made thereto by the Groton Town Council pursuant to Charter, Town Charter 3.7, and repeals 6.1 of the Town Code of Ordinances by which the current boundaries of the town's voting districts were established and described, and changes to District 1, 2, 3, 4. Portions of District 3 have been moved to District 2. Portions of District 1 moved to District 4. And this was dated Groton, Connecticut, the 27th day of April 2022. And that's when it was posted and published in the New London Day.
Thank you. First on my list, I have Ian Thomas.
Greetings again. So Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. For full disclosure, I am Portia Bordelon's husband, and we live in a neighborhood that has been impacted by this redistricting. It was just about a month ago that we received a notice from the Register of Voters saying that, in fact, our polling place had been relocated into District 4, Mary Morrison, which we found most curious because we live in District 3 right now, which is the city of Groton. And with this redistricting plan, we're going to be moved into District 2, which is also in the city. But somehow, we got a notice to one of us. Only one of us got the notice saying that they were going to... We needed to vote at District 4, Mary Morrison. This confusion, and we're just one family, one family. I can't imagine, I don't know how many, I would like to know how many of these notices went out because, one, due process. This is the first hearing we're having about redistricting and where the polling place is going to be and all that. So until that's done, until this vote is done, no notices should be going out. So I'd like to know who's in control of the Register of Voters and who's making these calls? What's going on over there? Please, need help, confusion. More families are getting these notices, there's going to be more confusion later on. Furthermore, it doesn't even make any sense intrinsically because that's a town polling station, and we live in the city. So the only other polling station we could ever go to would be the District 2 polling station, which now is being relocated back to Thames River Magnet School, where the former site of Westside Middle School, which, by the way, I think is a great location. I think that should carry on. And to that end, since we are going to be in District 2, our neighborhood is one of the few neighborhoods that changed districts out of District 3 into District 2 now. The Thames River Magnet School would be a great location for our neighborhood, the Mirror Estates neighborhood, to go to a polling station at the District 2 polling station, as opposed to having like some kind of confusion at the municipal building where you have two different districts voting at one polling station. So I think it would just be simpler to keep the districts all to one polling station. And it's not that far a different drive. So as this moves forward, I would hope that we invest heavily in communication and clarity and simplicity of process so that everyone knows exactly where they need to go. And we need to do it as soon as possible once the decisions are made and finalized following due process. So I urge you all to get together and talk. And, you know, no disrespect. I don't know what's going on. I don't know how the notice got sent out. All I know is that it happened, and it doesn't make any sense. So please do all you can to correct that. And moving forward, communication is everything, but due process is the most important thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up. I see here Shontay Duzan.
Hi. Me again, should I state my address?
Sure. Yes, thank you.
So 20 Nathan Hill. Didn't catch everything that Ian was saying. However, I guess I am just finding out that my polling station, I am in District 2. I live in Groton Estates. So I am just finding out that my polling station has changed. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe it is changing, I'm not sure. But my question is, when did this happen? And Ian also mentioned about notifying people. So I'm not... He said he was notified, but I wasn't notified that my polling station changed? And so I'm curious to know how we are notifying residents of Groton that their location has changed. In the last few years, it has been at the Zabursky House, which has caused a really, a really bad problem and disenfranchisement for many residents in Groton, being that it had always been at Westside Middle School, which is now Thames River. And I know that a lot of people could not access that polling place at the Zabursky House. I am friends with many people around. I used to live in Branford Manor for a very long time, and I know many of those residents I had to give rides to. and I know many of those residents I had to give rides to, um, and that couldn't access those polls. So I think if in fact it is at Thameside River, um, Magnet School, that that is excellent. I hope that, I, I hope that, um, it can change, um, the outcome of certain elections as far as, um, residents being able to access the polls, being able to walk there. Um, but again, my main concern now is that do, do the residents know this? And what is our plan, um, for notifying our residents that their polling station has changed? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. If anyone else in the room would like to speak, please approach the podium.
This is for, just for the public hearing on the voting district ordinance?
Just need your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Gary Wells. I live at five Route twenty-seven in Old Mystic and represent District five on the R T M, which is not impacted by these, this realignment. At, uh, one of the here, one of the council meetings, I picked up a word from one of the counselors questioning, uh, the apportionment of seats. Would this affect the apportionment of seats on the R T M? I see somebody going, no, no, no. And that's because we don't apply, we apply one person, one vote to both, but in the case of the R T M, it's the one person, our registered voters, not actual population, which is... And I was, when I first got on the R T M, I became aware of this, and I was looking for, um, I was curious to, to look for the result of the Supreme Court case, Evanwell versus Abbott, which dealt with this sort of thing, with redistricting. It didn't go as far as to affect us. But Professor Paul Edelman, a law and mathematics professor at Vanderbilt University, published a, a paper in the Michigan Law Journal, uh, I don't have that thing in Michigan, Michigan. Anyway, Michigan Law Journal, is Groton and next Evanwell. I bring you copies of this, but he sent copies to all the counselors and to the town manager and town clerk. And the councils asked their attorney for his opinion. He didn't think much of it, thought it didn't apply. But nobody, I guess he didn't wanna, wanna risk, uh, having, uh, his paper criticized, having the town attorney didn't wanna risk criticism from a law professor. So it didn't, they didn't do anything with the intellectual curiosity, courtesy to send him our opinion of what he had written. And the attorney suggested that the counselors not speak of this. So once again, anyway. So we have the numbers. We could go forward and make, uh, have our R T M representative, representation, one person, one vote, based on population, as we're doing tonight with the, uh, state representation. And I'll quote, uh, in the Evanwell v. Abbott, I'm gonna quote, Justice Ginsburg wrote the opinion, wrote for the opinion of the court. It was a unanimous decision. There were some concurring, uh, uh, decisions, uh, opinions where they said, hey, Justice, we didn't go that far, Justice Ginsburg. This is far, it's trying to keep it. But she says, in, and I will quote, "In endorsing apportionment based on total population, Alexander Hamilton declared, 'There can be no truer principle than this, that every individual in the community at large has an equal right to the protection of government.'" So I think we can move forward with this. It, it won't be, uh, you know, a vote of the council, but we can, we can move forward and, and we'll see where we land. You might take another look at Professor Edelman's, uh, article and look at, with our new numbers and see, we'll see where we land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up for this public hearing, but if you're online and wish to speak, please raise your hand now. And if you're in the room, please approach the podium. Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing at seven thirty-two. Okay, and we are back from recess at seven thirty-two. Onto receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens to address the council. Please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@grotonct.gov by four P M. On the day of the meeting. Okay. First on my list, I have Neil Gardner.
Uh, Neil Gardner, one eleven Mitchell Street. Uh, I'm, I'm speaking here tonight in opposition to a town council mediator. We have nine town council members. Eight of them are Democrats, one is a Republican. I don't understand how you cannot get along. Um, I really don't think that the taxpayers are really spending this money. And, um, no other town council has had to have a mediator. And the voters had the confidence in you to elect you. And you need to do your jobs, or if you can't get along, then somebody needs to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Eric Osman, I believe.
Yes, Eric Osman, one twenty-five Eastwood, Groton City. Good evening. I first like to start off by asking a question to council. Who do you work for and who do you represent? Right now, as it stands, I'd like each council member in the, in the room, including the town manager, which I believe he's not here.
He's on the line.
Oh, he's on the line. To reflect upon the faces in this room and let it resonate that people in this room are the ones who voted for you with, with, to do a specific job and detailed description. Is very, is a very accurate statement to say that we are all your bosses. That goes for any of, any, any elected official in a free democratic society. For some of you, you have kept your end of the bargain, listened to your constituents, and have gone above and beyond what is expected of you. For that, I personally commend your professionalism and devotion. Thank you, and I really do truly appreciate it. However, it is be, is apparent that a negative social construct has been manifest and now public on live air and the animosity and division amongst our voluntary, our voluntary elected officials, meaning all of you. I have watched some of the most recent recorded council meetings, and I'm appalled by some of the behavior that's taking place. This is not only a reflection upon you as a council members, but it's a reflection upon the town that we live in and somehow makes it social media for the entire world to see. It is an embarrassment, to the point where some of you are requesting a mediator. Question, how much is a mediator going, mediator going to cost? Will be a part of our, will it be a part of our annual budget? Who's gonna pay for the mediator? Because I tell you right now, the taxpayers are sure as hell not gonna support this nor pay for it. We have our own bills, expenses to worry about, including taxes, and dealing with the ongoing inflation, the crisis that is spiraling out of control in this country. I would venture to guess that most, most of you work for a living. If you do, I would safely assume that a certain line of professionalism that you all have, uh, have at your job, the same kind of professionalism should carry over into the position here in council. If you don't act professional at your job, your employer has the justification to terminate your position or may, may force you to resign. In this scenario, which we were witnessing, constituents, we're asking you for your resignation if the behavior does continue. In conclusion, you have three options at this point. If you want a mediator, I would suggest that you do dig into your own pockets and pay for one. The people of Groton are not gonna pay for it, period. Start acting like professionals and find some common ground so you won't have to get a mediator. Work together as a team. If you feel that you can't handle the position anymore, resign. Plain and simple. It's common sense, folks, not rocket science. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Chris Coon. Chris Coon? Just need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christian. I live at one oh four Irving Street in Groton. I'm a member of the Steering Committee of Groton Conservation Advocates and representing G C A tonight. Mayor Melendez and town counselors. I want to speak to you about the recent windfall to the town from the tax on NIPs liquor bottles. The town is expected to receive, expects to receive thirty-three thousand dollars from just the first six months of tax, taxes collected. We can assume the annual take will be in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars or more. G C A asks that you consider a few suggestions for spending these funds. The NIPs tax was a solution to the NIPs problem sought by the bottling and reclamation industries so they wouldn't have to develop a new recycling system for the tiny NIPs bottles. A NIPs tax stream has been designed to create a new dependency that will discourage towns or the state from outlawing NIPs. Unfortunately, the tax, while bringing welcome funds into the towns, will do nothing to decrease the vast number of these non-recyclable bottles. There were six, more than six hundred and seventy thousand NIPs were sold in Groton over the six months that generated the thirty-three thousand dollars that Groton will receive. Most of these NIPs bottles are flung onto the ground as yet more plastic waste in a world overflowing in plastic garbage. We hope that the spotlight on the enormous harms from single-use plastic soon will lead to public policy that effectively addresses the NIPs problem. Such policy ideally should be an outright ban. Short of that, we may look toward future reconsideration by our state legislature of a twenty-five cent redemption fee for NIPs, as was the proposal last year in the initial version of Connecticut's Bottle Bill. Replacement of the NIPs tax by a redemption fee, of course, would make the current windfall only a temporary one, but would have the huge benefit of decreasing NIPs litter. With this in mind, we recommend that the council disperses the NIPs tax receipts across a number of programs or as seed funding, so no single pro, program or two becomes dependent on the NIPs tax as a sole source of support. Most important, we suggest that the council dedicates the NIPs tax fund toward work that addresses environmental concerns and focuses on plastics. We encourage the town to put a substantial portion into school-based campaigns that devise creative ways to reduce and reuse so we don't have to recycle. Our youth are the next generation of leaders, so let's enlist them as an army battling plastics pollution. Groton has abundant talent to engage in the design of such valuable educational opportunities. As one example, Michael Whitney, a Yukon professor of marine science at Avery Point, is collaborating with David Aldrich, Executive Director of SCARA, Eric Majors, the founder of Seaside Sustainability out of Gloucester, Mass., and local high school faculty in the design of a program titled Marine Debris Education and Prevention in Diverse Environmental Justice Coastal Communities. With a focus on single-use plastic debris, this proposal describes a two-year project that will actively engage and educate a diverse high school student target audience, collaborate with teachers, collaborate with teachers and community partners, accomplish marine debris prevention through student-driven projects, and raise community awareness about marine debris. This project has the potential to expand into sustained and more widespread green scholars curriculum developed by Majors and successfully implemented in numerous school systems. Counselor Franco recently circulated a picture of a large fist sculpture full of plastic debris that could be a potent visual reminder that marine life ingests plastics. As another potential project, the town could create signs that promote reusable bags. Such signage could be a strategic and town-wide public reminder and result in real behavior change. These are examples of a wealth of potential proposals that could be solicited by the town and engage residents across the community. As a final note, we hope the council will consider using any uncommitted NIPs tax receipts to start building back the zero-dollar balance in our open space acquisition fund. While we have heard people say that we really can't do anything with thirty, ten to thirty thousand dollars, we certainly can in five years with a hundred thousand dollars in matching funds for a critical open space acquisition. In closing, the town's plastic ordinance has been a critical measure to address plastics pollution, and we applaud the council's action to make it happen. We hope that the NIPs windfall will be used to continue this crucial work. Thank you for considering our suggestions as you contemplate the welcome task of how to allocate the NIPs tax funds.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Mitchell Shenbrot. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Mitchell Shenbrot. I live at one sixteen Dartmouth Drive, Mystic, Connecticut. I've been a resident of Groton for thirty-eight years and was on the R T M in the early nineties. The town council is entrusted by the citizens of Groton to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. That's what you signed up for when you took this job. I'll bet no one forced you into this honorable position, which has significant responsibility and impacts every citizen in the town. It is obvious to everyone that there is significant dysfunction among the members of the town council. This can't be blamed on partisanship because eighty-nine percent of you are from the same political party. This dysfunction is inhibiting the council's ability to conduct the town's business. Personally, I don't think every council member is a contributor to this problem. The idea of using taxpayer dollars to hire a mediator makes me sick. For one thing, you already have a mediator, the mayor. There is a lack of respect for your existing mayor and Robert's Rules of Orders driven by self-interests, which are the root causes of the problem. Furthermore, a mediator has no power, and their success in this position is fully dependent on your cooperation to function as a team, which you have yet to demonstrate. It's time to put your egos in your pockets and work for the good of Groton. Do not waste taxpayer dollars on hiring an outside person. It will accomplish nothing. The appropriate action is to put aside your differences, respect your current mediator, and each other enough to accomplish the business you volunteered to take on. You don't have to be friends, but you do need to follow the rules and to accomplish the business to which you are entrusted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have John Scott.
Hi there, I'm John Scott. I live at six seventy-four.
Next is John Scott. Thank you.
Start over. Hi there, I'm John Scott. I live at six seventy-four Cal Hill Road in Mystic. I am the chairman of the Republican Town Committee, as well as a member of the R T M. I'm here tonight to speak about the concept of this Groton Town Council hiring a mediator to help each other get along. This idea is unconscionable and a significant dereliction of duty. As chairman of the Groton Republican Town Committee, we were quite seriously considering setting up a Tuesday night fundraiser that would support a local charity, such as a homeless shelter, where any, anytime one of you said any form of point of, all participants would have to throw a dollar in the kitty. And of course, Counselor Bordelon said it, participants would have And of course, Councilor Bordalyn said it, participants would have to throw in $2. We did consider making it a drinking game, but all of us would be fairly inebriated about 15 minutes in, and we didn't want to be hungover on Wednesday. Reflecting back on the recent Citizens Police Committee vote, I'm actually very curious as to how a mediator would help. When the mayor had called the vote and Councilor Bordalyn was being obstinate in her refusal to vote, would the mediator stop the meeting, pull people aside like a kindergarten teacher, and speak to each of you individually, asking to behave better? When Councilor Franco tried to read into the record what had transpired with the recess called by Councilor Baumgartner that resulted in an angry outburst by Councilor Baumgartner, how would the mediator have handled that? Everyone go and stand in a corner, face the wall, and think about your decisions? In 2014, when Councilor Baumgartner and I were elected to represent Groton in the Connecticut Legislature, we were called to Hartford for a freshman orientation program. I know Councilor Baumgartner attended because I drove him. The program taught us how the sausage was made in Hartford, and my biggest takeaway from that was the concept that your word is your bond. Let me repeat that. Your word is your bond. In the world of politics, that is the only thing you have to trade. If you promise another politician that you're supporting something, and you made an agreement, such as I'll help you with this bill if you help me with that one, then you damn well better keep your word and follow through. You can change your mind, but you'd better let that person know in advance. So when you're a politician and your word is your bond, it requires communication and a willingness to get along with your fellow elected officials. Groton isn't seeing any of this, and it's an embarrassment to watch. There are some significant personalities on this council. Some of you are drunk with power, and it is evident with your behavior. I teased earlier in our RTC fundraiser idea that participants would have to donate $2 for every time Councilor Bordalyn called a point of. For the last couple of years, we've watched you being an obstructionist at these council meetings, even campaigned on it. Councilor Bordalyn, while the voters in Groton like you and you're a high vote earner, those of us who live inside the bubble of town government see how these meetings could be two hours shorter if you weren't here being an obstructionist. For the betterment of the community, you and others should consider resigning. Long and short, I do not want to see our hard-earned tax dollars spent on a mediator. You should not do it. If you can't stand the heat of this kitchen, then get out of it. You have to start getting along with each other, and the mediator is not a path to success. Changing the membership of this council is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Tom Hailing.
My name is Tom Hailing, 158 High Street, Mystic. I am also opposed to the mediator idea, and I think it's been pretty eloquently said. I don't want to repeat and spend a lot of time, but I do think we need to get together and do our jobs. I know it's a thankless job and the pay grades are pretty low, but it still needs to be done, and I do appreciate your being here, representing your fellow townspeople, but it is time to step up and work together on the projects. I would think we don't need a mediator for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Brian Gates.
Good evening. Brian Gates is live at 116 Cove Road in Stonington, but also I own Spicer Mansion at 15 Elm Street. Reached out today, and I'm going to get it done in five minutes. Couple of things, one brings everybody's attention. Back in, we bought the building back in 2013. We bought it as an investment because the town was going to tear, demolition it down. And the most prolific sea captain owned it, Captain Eliu Spicer, which everybody knows about his history. He donated the Mystic Noank Library, he donated the seaport, and he donated the Groton Town Parks to wayward kids for them to learn how to sail. And he was the most prolific sea captain in all America, right here in Mystic, Connecticut. He built the mansion for his wife's wedding present, right? We bought it, we found the old permit back in 1998. It was classified as a hotel slash motel through zoning, right? It was never put on the land records. I found the permit, I put it on the land records in 2014. We started a major renovation, dealing with the town, HDC, zoning, all the authorities, state liquor, everybody, and worked very well with us, right? In 2019, when Tom Zanarini came to town, okay, they filed a lawsuit against us for an egress downstairs and a Facebook post, okay, out there, and also numerous complaints. Well, in the lawsuit, as far as the numerous complaints go by neighbors, et cetera, in the Freedom of Information Act, when I went through it, there was one complaint the whole time. So Rich Cody, the attorney of record for Sussman-Sapiro, misled everybody. On that note, Rusty Sargent is my architect. Well, in 2019, we got, I spent $15,000 on the egress, and it all stamped, all certified through Rusty. Kevin Quinn at HDC said it looks good to him. Fritz, the fire chief, and Tony Manfredi at that time, at that time, said it looks good. Tom Zanarini went to go get the permit on it, he denied it. He said, "No, because we're in a lawsuit," right? So that's Tom Zanarini, and also, to this day, until this past April, he still was denying it because we're in a lawsuit, okay? Now, on that note, on Rich Cody, the attorney for Sussman-Sapiro, I can probably solve this mediation problem. I don't know if the town is to realize, okay? I brought this to John Burton's attention, Tom Zanarini, okay, all the powers that be, right? Rich Cody has a private practice, too, okay? And also, I was in his office in 2019. I don't know if Rich Cody told John Burton, I was inside his office trying to work this whole thing out. And I have all, I sent my bucket list to everybody. Inside it, he said, "Brian, we can work this all out after our meeting." He gave me the new zoning regulations that are out there for us, for everybody, because they changed a lot of the zoning regulations around, right? He said, "You do this, this, this. Also, I'll get the town to drop the fee from $12,000 down to $10,000." It was $186,000, to let you know, on the cease and desist that we had, right? He kept working it down, working it down, working it down. But also, he made note of it, that I also want you to take, and I'll get the fee down, I'll get all the regulations down for you, but also, I want you to pay my private firm, too. Now, his private firm, I don't know if you guys saw this write-up when you hired Rich Cody on my case. He is, this is him, "My name is Richard Cody, I'm an attorney in private practice, I live in Mystic." He's against public safety. He's against sprinkler systems in places, totally. You know, he says, "And also, municipal employees should not tell anybody, private people or people who have historic homes, of what they're doing when it comes to public safety." So that's a huge conflict of interest. And I wasn't going to pay this guy. So then it continued. And everybody knows about Spicer Mansion. Well, then we're going to go on with John Burton, the town manager. During the whole process, I always reached out to John Burton, Tom Zanarini, and everything. I'm getting everything done and satisfied. But every time I would take an email then when something was going on, okay? This is back on 10/5/2021. "Brian, I received your voicemail. Unfortunately, I'm not able to meet since we're co-mingling the litigation concerning the property. Additionally, it does not involve, I'm not involved with Planning and Zoning Commission, which I don't have any involvement with." I get it, no problem at all, okay? Reaching out to him. Now, going forward, because we had an illegal fire inspection done in the fall, which Rusty's going to go over that with you.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Yeah, I get it. Just give me three more minutes.
Well, everybody has five minutes. I have to just keep it to five.
Well, I'm going to get to, one last thing I want to get to, okay?
Okay, just make it brief, very brief.
I'll make it real brief.
Okay, thank you.
Real, real brief.
Okay.
Well, on April 1st, okay, of this year, on this email from the town manager, okay, about Spicer Mansion, "The current owner of Spicer Mansion continues to violate the court injunction. The town filed a motion of contempt," which they did. "The owner files a request to dismiss our motion," which was denied by the judge. It wasn't denied. We put our objections in, that's when it was due. "Given the history of the history of non-payment of things and fines, I request him to have him charged in a criminal sense." Well, he sent that to my famous report on New London Day, but what he did not, he failed to give the town council. He failed that a legal notice was sent on the 28th of New London Day. Finally, okay, I was getting my permit for the HDC meeting.
Thank you.
What, no. Now, one last thing, I got to make it very clear, okay? They granted my permit that had been waiting three years, that Tom, Tom, Tom Zanarini, Rich Cody-
Thank you.
-said I couldn't get. And on that, Mayor, to let you know, too, that approval came in. Tom Zanarini fought it behind the screen like that, along, and guess what? Was that put in the paper? It couldn't go in the paper because we have a lawsuit against them. They denied me permitting. So I just want to make it real clear that I want a formal letter from the city council, from, from John Burton, telling the London Day that we were permitted for it. The reason why he won't do that, because the ongoing lawsuit of them denying me permitting.
Thank you.
So I'm looking to the city council to reach out and get things straightened out.
Thank you. Next, I have Rusty Sargent.
Can you stand up? So I'm going to sit right here.
Let me bring my-
The mic actually comes right off the top if someone grabs it.
Yeah, I've worked with Brian for quite a long time on this building. 1996, I got a zoning permit, excuse me, a special permit from the zoning commission to convert this building, which was, I think he described it, it was probably the largest single-family residence and one of the most ornate in the town, in the entire town, certainly in Mystic, maybe, you know, Eastern Point has some big homes also, I realize that. But the intent of the regulation was to provide reuse opportunities for unique buildings, historically, architecturally, and aesthetically unique, which I think this building hits it pretty hard on all three of those characteristics. And in appropriate, you know, determining, evaluating appropriateness of the proposed use, the commission goes through a whole series of criteria, which are pretty clearly laid out, and that at that time, we met and we got a motel hotel approved. Now, surely thereafter, I was, I didn't, so years, a number of years passed, probably seven, six, six years passed, Mr. Gates and his, and his team bought the property. At that point, I was doing the Emporium at 15 Water Street, and I had some sprinkler questions, so I called the sprinkler guy, and he goes, "Hey, Ben, you got to better give this builder a call. He's doing 15 Elm Street, the Spicer Mansion, over, and there's a whole series of, you know, we're putting sprinklers in, yeah, we're going to put a full alarm system in, yeah, and they're going to spend a tremendous amount of infrastructure money there." But there were building and fire code issues with the building. There are provisions for antique historic buildings, because obviously, they have to, you know, refi, you know, replace all the windows with larger windows, change all the handrails, the detailing and so forth, was, you know, is irreplaceable in many, in many ways. So at that point, we filed for a series of fire code and building code modifications as a bed and breakfast, even though that was not allowed use in the town. I thought that was curious, I wasn't involved in that negotiation, and proceeded. Now, Airbnb, it's meant to be in a house. Well, this is a house, a motel, it's meant to have a concierge and staff and all, and all kinds of things, okay? So I said, "Fine." We did that, we got those, and then that was in May, June of 2015. We immediately went through site plan approval, HDC approval for a number of things at that stage. But I kept, the idea that we had all these building and fire code modifications as an Airbnb, when I saw what was going on, started to worry me. I'm getting a little concerned. Well, in 2016, sure enough, probably, you know, at the request of some town official, and we're not, I'm not naming names because I don't know, but all of a sudden, the town, you know, the state fire marshal shows up, goes in, and says, "Well, this is not an Airbnb, that's ridiculous. It's a hotel. They got a commercial kitchen, they have full-time staff." But, so that disordered that. That was, that was 2016. Not until September of 2021, that's five years, that I never got notice. Okay, the fire, and this is where there's communication issues between, not so much within the departments in the town, but between the fire district, Mystic Fire District, and town planning staff. I mean, there were some things there. That, you know, it was curious, and in 2019, all of a sudden, they said, "Well, you got to get another means of egress out of a service bar that was in the basement." So I went through that, and I think as Brian described, we couldn't do anything. We were stuck because there was a lawsuit, there were zoning violations. This is a public safety issue that the planning department decides, well, you know, public safety, that's not nearly as important as some ephemeral zoning policy, okay? And that's where we were, okay? Recently, things loosened up a little bit, and we've had, I could go through letter after letter I've written, I'm just trying to be concise because I know I have a limited amount of time. And, you know, a month ago, we did get the HDC permit to allow us to proceed with the required means of egress from the basement. But, and, and one thing did happen, this is really what I'm here tonight to do, is to try to say, "Hey, look, if you hear anything," or you might ask some of the people in the planning department and town manager's staff as to, you know, what's going on there. "Can you explain a few things?" And I can give you a checklist of things that need to explain. Our objective is to keep this running. It's not an inexpensive building to maintain, as you probably imagine, and a fair amount of money has been invested in it to get the clientele. The taxes have gone up about five and a half times, and a building that was going to be demolished is being preserved. So that's really my objective. I don't mean to be hostile, I'm just saying, you know, there's been mistakes on both sides. There's been a lot of confusion. This is a very difficult thing. It's not the normal thing. You probably haven't seen another one, or the planning, the building department probably haven't seen anything quite like this, okay? So, you know, we just, you know, would hope you could recognize that and reach out to the people on town staff, who, and recently, I want to, you know, give a shout out to Peter Zinglis, because he did, in, when is this? Oh, February, okay, did give us a checklist of the things, you know, it's a much shorter list. We have about 40 things we've got to do with the fire marshal, because a hotel has to have all kinds of emergency plans and reports, you know, yearly inspections, and Airbnb didn't. We have to get a handicap unit on the ground floor, there's a whole series of things we have to do in order to bring it, to make that, and it's all based on an error made by the planning and zoning, the designing and building official that we've lived, you know?
Thank you.
Live and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have, can't read the first name, Gates from 15 Elm Street.
Good evening. My name is Ulwika Gates, and I'm the committee for Spicer Management, LSC, also known as Spicer Mansion, on 15 Elm Street in Groton. Our annual liquor inspection was performed on August the 19th, 2021, by Mystic Fire Department. We were not furnished with a report until September 2nd. It was three weeks' lapse time. The most recent four years prior to that, it only took about three hours to get your approval. Consequently, we had requested a meeting with the Mystic Fire Department, and a number of members of the fire department was there, along with myself, Brian Gates, and Rusty Sargent, as well as our attorney. During this discussion, the chief of the fire department presented a letter that had been sent to the town five years prior to this inspection, that was provided actually by the state fire marshal. Rusty had mentioned that earlier in his speech. And that letter actually designated the property as a hotel and motel, not a bed and breakfast. So I'm not sure exactly where, what the reasoning for that letter not being presented to the owners of the property, nor the tenant of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Larry Bright.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Larry Bright. I live at 8 Horizon Drive, Groton, Connecticut. As a first-time member of the RTM, I actually watched all of- As a first-time member of the RTM, I actually watched all of the town council meetings and all of the town council budget meetings, primarily to gain information, because as a newbie, I wanted to try to find out as much as I could, you know, about how things worked. But as a first-time person, I kind of found out that there was some kind of underlying problem here. Because as I watched the meetings, they didn't go as I thought they, you know, should go according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you.
Now, you do have a mediator, as Mr. Scott said. He's sitting right there. He's called Mayor Melendez. And being a retired military person, the man in charge is the man in charge, and you should respect him. You don't have to like him, but you have to respect him. And when he says something, you really should listen to him. So I think Mr. Scott pretty much summed it up. So I'm gonna be brief, because I know the other people took a lot of time. So as a new person and a citizen of, you know, the town of Groton, that's kind of my impression. And I'm sure that there are a lot of other people that have the same impressions that I do. So thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next I have Ian Thomas.
Last time for the night. Ian Thomas, 24 Justin Drive. So a few things. One, the concern with a mediator. I don't think the town council needs a mediator. I think the Democratic Town Committee needs a mediator. Again, full disclosure, I'm Portia Bordelon's husband, and I was also her campaign manager during the primary. You remember the primary, yes? Yes. That happened. What happened after that was a very awkward general election campaign that saw a small portion of the council slate campaigning on their own, and other portions of the campaign. Well, there we go. Case in point. Now, what we are dealing with is a failure to communicate, right? That phrase. The communication problems are inherent to the Democratic Party, and it has roots in the primary that were never resolved. I can tell you for a fact that both Portia and I approached the chairs of the Democratic Town Committee and the vice chair, and we asked to have some mediation sessions of some kind, some kind of like reconciliation. And a number of you were there at some of these attempts, and, you know, well, you know, there weren't really that many attempts, there was one, that was not managed very well at all by the leadership. So I don't think the town should be paying for this. I think the Democratic Town Committee should be paying for this, and it should be, it's a Democratic Town Committee problem, and it has roots in the primary, and anyone up here that is honest with themselves knows this. I also would like to speak on the, the vote that occurred last month on April 5th, that superseded the recommendations of the Personnel and Appointments Committee. That vote was improperly held. There was, the rules were not suspended to carry forward with the alternative nominations, for one. And, you know, I think that kind of, and there was like some arbitrary decisions made by the mayor, Mayor Melendez, you know, and, and, you know, I do respect the position, and, and there's a lot of responsibility on you to manage the meetings in a fair and, and, you know, even-handed manner, and, and quite frankly, I don't understand the logic behind some of the decisions you made that night. And I think that kind of circles back to the, to the problems of the communication. I think what this council struggles with is, is an ethical, logical, and moral consistency, you know, and following due process, you know, on, on a predictable fashion. You know, Mayor Melendez, you deferred to the recommendations of the Rules and Procedures Committee to reinstate the 32nd rules as the 33rd rules, and insisted that those, that recommendation must be carried forward out of committee for the vote. Yet you wantonly disregarded the recommendations coming out of the Personnel and Appointments Committee. You know, councilors Castieri and Jones, you all spoke very highly of institutional knowledge when you supported Franco, Councilor Franco for mayor. Yet you completely disregarded, in you putting up an alternative slate for ex officio member RTM, I was, I was one of the applicants, I was the applicant recommended by the Personnel and Appointments Committee. By superseding that, you actually disregard institutional knowledge, because I was the chair of the committee that drafted the report that led to the recommendations that created the committee group. So if you want someone there in the room that understands the background of how we got to be where we are, there's no one with more institutional knowledge that applied for the position than me. So, you know, not to dwell on sour grapes, just logical consistency is key to clear communication. And, you know, without that, if you're not gonna hold yourself to your own standards, well, that's when you seem more focused on creating a, a certain outcome as opposed to following the proper process. And that is what leads to a lot of acrimony. And that's what leads to certain councilors maybe feeling the need to obstruct a process that is not being done properly, or fairly, or transparently, or with equal access for everyone.
Thank you. Your time is expired, thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have John Goodrich.
Mayor Melendez, members of the council, John Goodrich, 13, 15 River Road, Mystic. So when we heard about the mediator, gotta be honest, disappointed but not surprised. So let me start. What are you guys here to do? What's your definition? So I pulled the charter, and it referred me to the Connecticut General Statute, so I'm gonna read the one line. "They shall superintend the concerns of the town." What's the town? Is it you? Is it the building down the road? No, it's all of us, the residents of this town of Groton. So your job is to take care of our business. In my time back in Groton, I have seen personal issues, personal wants, out-of-town people come above the town. We can look at Ressler and Quinn, both out-of-town developers that took people in our community to stand up to make some of you do the right thing. Then I see one councillor, two councillors that do the right thing, that put community before their committees be attacked. So again, we have a lot of our residents worried about their taxes going up, inflation is escalating, all these problems, and those of you that put your committee before your community decide to attack the councillors who have the mandate of the community, both number-one vote-getters. Sorry, I'm just trying to follow my notes here, I've had to change it a few times as people have been talking. So that's what the mediator is, in my opinion. It's just a passive-aggressive attack by people from the Democrat Committee on councillors supported by the community. So honestly, I don't care about what goes on in your committee, I don't want to hear it, and I'm most definitely not gonna pay for it. So what do we do next? Here it is, guys, you got a job. Your job is to take care of the community. Your job is to put your personal feelings aside, and you know what? I want a town government where there's disagreement, that's called checks and balances. If y'all agree, I'm gonna be nervous. But that disagreement has to be done in a civil discourse. And if any of you can't do it, I've got the no-cost way to fix it. Nine sheets of paper, leave it right here. Write out your resignation, and the exits are clearly marked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Vogel, 358 Pequot Avenue, Mystic. I was going to say that I wanted to echo all the voices that I've heard tonight, and I do echo most of them. And I'd also like to thank you, the councilors, for the effort and time that you voluntarily give to our town. However, I'm here to speak about the Mystic Oral School property, and I urge you, the Groton Town Council, to please, please work to terminate this purchase and sales agreement between the state, the town, and the Restler Homes. This agreement, this purchase and sales agreement, has been flawed from its beginning via lack of transparency and lack of public input. It continued to be flawed as Phase 1 was never completed. And now adding to its illegality is Ressler Homes' attempt to transfer its ownership of the Mystic Oral School property to a new developer called Blue Lotus. This transfer is prohibited by the state. No new RFPs or requests for proposals have been issued. We, the residents of Groton, have again been kept in the dark about this transfer and about Blue Lotus. We, the residents of Groton, are also prohibited from prohibiting, from participating in or even learning about what the alleged mediation between the town and Ressler Homes, not your mediation, between the town and Ressler Homes involves, or what this alleged mediation contains. We're prohibited. Yet Blue Lotus, who is a stranger to the sales and purchase agreement, has been invited to participate in this alleged secret mediation, or this secret alleged mediation. You, the town Groton council, are able to influence, if not dictate, the direction our town takes to inform and to some degree manage our paid Groton staff. We, the residents, the tax-paying residents and the non-taxpaying residents of the town of Groton, pay this staff. We elect you to represent us, and you have our trust, you have our trust that you will work to correct this flawed situation, to reflect our concerns about the Mystic Oral School property development, and to work to influence our paid town staff to terminate this flawed contract between the state, the town, and Ressler Homes. I look forward to us moving forward to terminate this one contract and to move forward ethically toward a transparent and reasonable development of the Mystic Oral School property. This is not a question about development, it's a question of the process and how it has been done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Diane Barber.
Mayor, I have a request after the speaker to have speakers, two speakers on the line are ill and they need to speak soon.
Okay.
Do you want them to go first? It's okay.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Van Brown?
All right, next we'll take Van Brown.
Okay. Van Brown, 925 River Road, Mystic, Town of Groton. Good evening, Mayor Melendez and councilors. I am so sorry. I am so disappointed. You had such promise. This venue was meant to be a forum to talk about the issues of the town. You have become the issue of the town. You have told the entire world that you need an expensive nanny to tell you how to share and play nice. You do not seem to be able to put aside your own political agendas to remember that we, the townspeople, be at the top of your agenda. How can we attract good businesses when your dysfunction makes headlines across the region? It's not a, not my backyard, NIMBY citizenship that drives good business away. It is your endorsement of completely inappropriate projects that cause your people to rise up to stop you from making yet another disaster of public policy. Thank goodness that activist citizenship is out there and growing, and after all, it is their backyard. Trying volunteer does not absolve you from doing the necessary homework to evaluate any proposal put before you by your staff. Choose to trust them or not, you are supposed to guide them. You are supposed to do your own background work. You are supposed to be in touch with the people who elected you, especially those who oppose you. Do not preach to the choir. Do you not hear that this town hates secret meetings and executive sessions? Executive sessions are only supposed to be used in the extreme. What exposure of your actions do you fear? No doubt you know the Greek saying, "Show me your friends and I will tell you who you are." What does the Oral School debacle say about you? The data centers? What about the attorneys who write opinions for whatever staff want to have happen? What about the seeming impossibility of this town government to follow a contract or engage in fair dealing? Each of you is extremely intelligent and caring of this community. It does not take a law degree to know when a contract says an interest may not be transferred. No amount of lawyer speak should convince you otherwise. Having Blue Lotus, a complete unknown, who is not privy to the RFP, present in, present in the mediation, is not appropriate and destroys any veil of secrecy. It is pathetic that neither Ressler's attorney nor our town attorneys explain that a random third party at the mediation table destroys any agreement for secrecy. We need to see those notes and records of those meetings. Continuing to include Blue Lotus when the state says that any assignment is dead on arrival is a waste of town money. Stop this farce. Changing the principles of the RFP is not fair dealing to all the other participants in that original RFP, and further holds the town of Groton up to the world as a poor place to do business. This is a good town. Do your actions reflect on us as a good town? It's not too late. Show the world that this is a good town in which to live and do business with a representative leadership invested only in the people of this town and their quality of life. Once you accomplish that, perhaps you won't have to buy developers by giving away tax monies that should go to the people. Acts of abatement, acts of abatements are nothing more than bribes to get someone to do business with you. That should tell you something. Thank you.
Who was the other person who was requesting to go now?
Beth Tillman, but I, they're together, so I, of course, that's one statement.
Beth Tillman?
Yes, I have a completely different statement for Mr. Brown, I would like to speak, please.
Thank you. You have the floor.
Are you acknowledging me? Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Beth Tillman, 925 River Road, Groton. Mr. Mayor, town councilors and staff, I would like to read into the record a letter that Heather Senator, Heather Summers, was kind enough in contacting Mr. Lehman for his opinion on the substitution slash addition of Blue Lotus to any project at the Mystic Oral School. It was dated April 22nd, 2022. Dear Jeffrey, it has come to our attention that Ressler Homes LLC is exploring the possibility of a buyout interest of the LLC by an entity called Blue Lotus Group, BLG. It is our underst- It is our understanding that this would result in a shift of control of Restler Homes LLC from yourself to BLG. In addition, we are aware that BLG has created a website, bluelotismystic.com, advertising its intent to develop a final product providing wellness-focused living for the 55-plus community at the Mystic Oral School site. By request, we have also been sent a notification about the change in plan. While we have limited details at this time, we understand the new proposal is a significant proctor from the proposal we received from Restler Homes LLC in response to our 2018 request for proposals. We are in the process of gathering further information about reviewing the information we have about the updated plans as a diversion from the original RFP response is concerning. As you are aware, Restler Homes LLC and the state of Connecticut are parties to a 2019 purchase and sale agreement related to the Mystic Oral School property. Their agreement is the result of an RFP promulgated by the state in the town of Groton in 2018 to which there were multiple respondents. The RFP was conducted in accordance with Public Act 15-193 and seeks to return dormant state-owned or formerly state-owned brownfield properties to economically productive use. Restler Homes LLC proposed to redevelop the Mystic Oral School property into a mixed-use site that would include residential units as well as recreational and commercial space. The development details contained in the proposal of February 15, 2018, are incorporated into the purchase and sale agreement and are designated therein in aggregate to the project. The agreement, in addition to citing the Public Act, reiterates that Restler Homes LLC was selected via the RFP process as a result of its proposal and specific plans for the project. Section 7 of the agreement requires the state, as seller, to obtain all approvals required by the state law. These approvals include but are not limited to the state Properties Review Board, the Office of Policy and Management, and the Department of Administration Services. At this point, we are concerned that these entities may not accept the new set of principles and the project not reviewed or vetted through the RFP process, when and if approval is sought. Notably, Public Act 15193 requires the Department of Economic and Community Development to solicit and review proposals from companies interested in purchasing state-owned or formerly state-owned properties placed on the priority list. Restler Homes' proposal was reviewed and selected accordingly. The interest and obligations of the state in this matter center on economic development and the return of otherwise derelict properties to productive use. We hope to see the Mystic Oral School property redeveloped in a way that benefits the residents of the town of Groton and the region. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, da-da-da-da-da. It was CC to Gary O'Connor, who is the attorney for Mr. Restler, Paige Rock, and John Burt. And without the review process, Mr. Lehman delineates, "It is impossible for the town of Groton to substitute Blue Lotus for Restler Homes." Thus, the mediation sessions are not private under the terms of the town mediation process. Thus, any and all decisions and discussions are subject to FOIA and should be released by the town of Groton at its earliest convenient moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I am Diane Barber, 144 Sandy Hollow Road. And you'll notice the sweater that I'm wearing today, it's got peace signs on it. That is a sign for you as councilors, please stop the madness. I know what I'm talking about. I know what it is to sit there. As you may know, I have sat on the town council. I know there are very frustrating nights that you have because you disagree with somebody. There's called respect each other and having manners. If you are grandstanding and talking for more than three minutes on a subject, you lose the crowd after three minutes. Your opinion weighs all the same, all nine opinions. Nobody's opinion means more. It's all the same. I want to give a shout out to Councilor Parker to bring forth that you are broken because you are broken and you have become an embarrassment for our town. If you cannot get along and respect one another and have manners, I respectfully request that you resign. Again, I know what I'm talking about. There were many times we had votes, didn't go my way, and it's the way it is. It's the art of negotiation. I strongly oppose my taxpayer dollars going towards mediator. If you can't get along or get anything done, please resign. My only other suggestion is, if you need somebody to kickstart you, I suggest our town clerk, Betsy McCausia. She's well-educated, she's smart, she knows Robert's rules, and she's already on the payroll. So please, ask Betsy to help you out, but stop the madness. Thank you.
Next, I have Tom Olson.
Tom Olson, 188 Crosswinds Drive. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. I'll be reading a statement that's endorsed by Larry Dunn, who's the chairman. Subject is in use of the remitted Senate Bill 1037 funds for NIPs surcharges. At the request of the town council between the years of 2018 and 2020, the Conservation Commission and many local environmental supporters investigated the need and desire for restrictions on the use of single-use plastics in our town. This effort involved extensive research, public education, outreach, surveys, education forums, presentations to the town council, to the RTM, to the EDC, press articles, and eventually the drafting and passing of an excellent and highly admired Plastic Ordinance Number 293. The ordinance has been well-implemented and accepted. Litter has been noticeably reduced. While the ordinance restricted plastic bags, drawers, Styrofoam takeout containers, and other items, the small plastic throwaway alcohol bottles, known as NIPs, remain a problem prior to the plastic ordinance, and to this day, they remain one of our biggest litter contributors in the town. In 2021, in response to pending legislation at the state level, the Conservation Commission conducted another public survey, finding that 90% of the respondents found NIP bottles to be a litter problem, and around 65% of the local respondents were in favor of eliminating them altogether. The town communicated with the state to support various NIP bottle limiting bills that were on the table, and the state ended up passing Senate Bill 1037, which put a five-cent surcharge on each NIP bottle sale. The legislation requires, one, that wholesalers remit the surcharges to the municipalities in which the containers were sold, and, two, the municipalities to use the remitted funds for environmental measures aimed at reducing solid waste and/or reducing the impact of litter, as outlined in Section 10. These measures include things like hiring a recycling coordinator, installing storm drains, filters to block solid waste, including beverage container debris, or purchasing mechanical street sweepers, vacuums, or brims to remove the litter and other debris from street sidewalks and abating lawn and turf areas. To date, the town has received $33,000 of surcharge payments. The Conservation Commission recommends that these, as an interim term, some of the money be set aside to create grants for an amount of $500 for each of the local environmental groups engaged in cleanup activities. The funds would be, go towards cost of running cleanups, such as the purchase of gloves, trash bags, publicity pickup costs, and various expenses of the project. A model of such a grant program from the Last Green Valley is attached for your reference in the package I provided. For the longer term, the bulk of the money should be set aside so it can be accumulated and put towards a more substantial and permanent solid waste solutions, such as industrial-scale composting, installation of nets and filters on storm drain outfalls, or significant projects yet to be determined. This important revenue stream is the result of hard work by our local legislative leaders, state senators and representatives, town council, the Conservation Commission, our local environmental advocates, such as the Groton Conservation Advocates, who addressed this issue earlier. The numerous individuals who showed up and supported the NIP bottles ban, we deserve a lot of credit, and we should use this money judiciously and wisely to create an even cleaner and better Groton for the longer term. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Penny Miller.
I am Penny Miller, 56 Hancock Drive, Groton. Good evening, town councilors, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burt, and fellow citizens. I want to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to you, the members of the town council, for giving sacrificially of your time and efforts to the running of our town. Thank you. I am here tonight to petition the council to carry out the recommendations regarding the Mystic Oral School made by Attorney McCausia in the letter you have received from him. To restate this advice, the town council should instruct the town manager and town attorneys to take the following three steps. Number one, dismiss Blue Lotus Group immediately from the mediation process between the town and Restler Homes. Blue Lotus Group has no legal standing in this mediation because it is not a party to the development agreement. Even if Blue Lotus Group acquires Restler Homes, it does not inherit the development agreement or the rights granted to Restler in that agreement. Number two, terminate the development agreement between the town and Restler on the basis of Restler's failure to deliver his obligations under the agreement. Number three, make public all records of past meetings held under the guise of mediation in which Blue Lotus Group was either present or an active participant. Citizens have a right to transparency in government. Off-the-record meetings and secrecy are an unjustified affront to citizens. Councilors, please use your powers to execute on these imperatives. The controversy over redevelopment of the Mystic Oral School has dragged on for too long. The flaws of the development agreement and of the preferred developer have been amply exposed. The best and the only viable path forward is clear, and it is time to move forward. Thank you for your attention.
Next, I have Jim Furlong.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fishtown Lane in Groton. My topic tonight concerns the consideration of a media person to make the town council more cohesive and productive, in the words of the town manager. Those are not my words, nor do I buy those words. It's not the expense I worry about, as one gentleman was, although I think $275 an hour is completely ill-spent. The problem is that the town council does not require a babysitter. The councilors are all elected adults who take seriously their duty to represent their clients. Sometimes they disagree. Causes distress for a number of spectators and some members of the council. Voices get raised on occasion. Why would you want it otherwise? Have you ever watched the British House of Commons in a debate on public television? Watch one of those if you haven't, and then tell me we have a problem. Granted, the Brits go a little too far, but watching them provides perspective for us. Who would want a council that's always cohesive? We hear tonight about military cohesion and team cohesion. Those are very important things, but they are not what legislation is all about. Who wants cohesion? Well, it certainly includes the roving salesmen of mega-projects like New England Edge and GotSpace with their data centers, which they want us to adopt within a month, and Restler Homes has gigantic construction plans for the banks of the beautiful Mystic River. They have no idea what the Mystic River is or what it means to this town. We need councilors who ask these salesmen probing questions, and they don't hesitate to pose tough follow-ups for fear of looking awkward or slow. Yeah, I'm a former journalist, and one of the things they told me when I first got on the job was, "Ask any question you want. It can be the dumbest question in the world, but you got to understand what's going on. And if you don't, your goal is to get the truth, get the information as correct. It's not to look smart." We need people who ask questions, smart and dumb, and both. Okay, football teams, as I said, they need to work together seamlessly under the coach and the quarterback, but legislators need to do their own thinking at every step. We elected these people. We have a knowledgeable town clerk. Let them work out any problems themselves. They will. Thank you very much. We have more to fear from group think than we have to fear from little squabbles here. Introducing another point, introducing a mediator to second-guess the actions of our legislators would put a shadow over our legislative process. Inevitably, it would cast doubt on the council's objectivity. Whoever appoints the mediator creates an impression he's got a finger on the scale. That's not a good thing. By the way, if I were a counselor, I would certainly refuse to sign on to this project, not only because it's a bad idea for the town, but because it comes very close on page one to being a binding arbitration on the signing of individuals. Please reject this very harmful idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Camille Taylor.
Good evening. Camille Taylor, 60 Essex Street. And I am grateful that I'm able to speak to the council in regards to concerns I have about the introduction of a mediator for this council. I have been living here for over 35 years. I'm not from Connecticut originally, and I have come to, began to watch the GM television, Groton Municipal Television. And I'm very shocked and embarrassed about the behavior of many people on this council. And one of the big things I see is there's antagonists against antagonists here, and the drama that's coming through is not very pleasant at all to view. Having a mediator for me is seeing that you are looking for an outside resource to help what's really required inside of yourselves, and that's what's coming clear and clearly through. I traveled all around the world. I've been to many different places. I've seen the Berlin Wall before, when it was still in existence. I've been through India. I've seen poverty and all of so many things that I can explain. Groton is where I chose to settle with my husband and my son. It's a beautiful place. It's a beautiful town. And when I see these council meetings coming through into my living room, it's embarrassing for me, even with my son, to watch, because I've never seen disrespect and for me, even with my son, to watch, because I've never seen disrespect and disaccord so much. So I'm just here to say I'm against the mediation or the idea of a mediator, that I feel that you are able to work it out yourselves. I'm sure you do it in all your private lives, in relationships, and I'm here to give you some encouragement to go forward to do that, but also to say I'm against what the proposal is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Kelly Poulsen.
Kelly Poulsen, 112 Laurelwood Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and town council members. Respectfully request ordinances governing residential light trespass. Connecticut currently has strict ordinances in place governing light trespass and light pollution for state, town, and city lights, 2017-R-0258. As said on ncsl.org, in their states shut out light pollution, exposure to bright light at night can interfere with natural circadian rhythms, which research has linked to sleep disorders, depression, obesity, breast cancer, and more. Wildlife is also harmed by light pollution. The decline of fireflies, the death of birds during migration, and the fatal disorientation of newly-hatched sea turtles are only examples. Many towns in Connecticut have light trespass and light pollution ordinances currently in place. Some have strict light trespass ordinances for businesses, especially businesses that border residences. They state light needs to be shielded and that are not to be seen above ground level. Floodlights are not allowed, and they state the ordinances for residential lights are the same as the business ordinances. I have provided documentation on these to the town council members. For example, town of Eastford, all businesses, residential and community roadways, sidewalks, and town property luminaries should be placed and installed with the idea of being a, quote, "good neighbor" by keeping unnecessary direct light from shining into budding properties or roadways, both public and private. My house has been flooded with light 24/...well, not 24/7, every single night for the last five years. Please put yourself in my position. Would you want your neighbor flooding your house with light for one night, let alone every single night, all night long, as well as multiple cars purposely sitting there day or night with their headlights on your house? This has been happening for over a year from the current residents, every single night. They also happened, this also happened with the prior owners. So I have had neighbor residential light trespass for over five years, trespassing through my yard, into my home, through to my backyard, to the trees behind my backyard, every single night, all night long. I'm sure that I am not the only person in this town that has had to deal with this. Please put your single daughter in my position. Would you want this happening to your single daughter? All of these guys, light trespassing into your daughter's home every single night? Would you want your daughter to be able to get help from the police instead of receiving the comments that I have received? What do you want me to do, arrest someone for turning on a light? Do they even have to angle their light down to the driveway instead of at your house? We cannot help you without light trespass ordinance. They can put up eight-foot pole covered in light shining directly on your house, and there's nothing we can do and nothing you can do. A single-family home was purchased as a two-bedroom house, one across the street from me. There are six non-relate, there were six non-related people living there, five guys and two girlfriends. These three, three more people have just moved in, including a very young little girl into a house the owner told me that they party every weekend and will continue to do so, with nine vehicles there every night, not including the vehicles of their guests. They are also continuing to escalate by parking right where I back out of my driveway, leaving an open spot in their driveway or on their property, parking against neighbors' property outside their property lines, just so they can park where I need to back out of my driveway. They continue to add unrelated residents to the town, to the two-bedroom house. Town zoning told me the limit is six unrelated people living in a single-family house. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinance to prevent neighbor light trespassing through my property. Respectfully request the town enforce the single-family house limits, preventing more than six unrelated people and to prevent even more people from moving in. I have every right to having my home and being able to enjoy my home and being able to feel safe in my home. Thank you very much for your time. Hope you have a wonderful night.
Next I have Ed McCauser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name's Edward McCauser. I live at 48 West Eldicken Avenue in Groton. I represent the Mystic Oral School advocates with respect to the Mystic Oral Project, and I had not addressed a council concerning this since September of last year, and at that time, the council determined to proceed with claiming a default and pursuing that through negotiation, mediation, and further. And at that time, I felt that the town had embarked on the correct course, particularly because beyond just the criminal background of Mr. Raspeler, the fact was, the development agreement was signed in February of 2020, and no, nothing, there was a time schedule in the agreement which was very detailed and precise, and Mr. Raspeler had done absolutely nothing. So I felt that it was the correct course. We had a developer who talked his way into being the preferred developer, but was, you know, refusing to perform. And we are now in a mediation phase, which appropriately should be addressing the issue of default, whether, you know, we want to continue pursuing that. I think it's important that we do. Mr. Raspeler is claiming that he can't perform because the town did not file for approvals and for zone change, and for all these things that he claims was the town's responsibility. But I'd just like to read from Article 5 of the Development Agreement on page eight. "In accordance with the development plan, developer at its sole cost and expense and with reasonable diligence shall prepare detailed applications, plans, and appropriate supporting materials, and apply for all governmental approvals that are required from any governmental authority in order to construct a project in accordance with this agreement and the development plan." This could be plainer, you know, that it's his responsibility to pursue approvals, submit plans. He hasn't met any of the timelines, period. And, you know, he's distracted the town by bringing in someone to buy him out. I explained in the letter why that's under the development agreement, not a proper. And we've also heard, you know, you had the Department of Economic and Community Development's letter read to you, which is saying that this is entirely inappropriate and the proper process for choosing a developer, rather than Mr. Raspeler choosing the developer, is to go through the RFP process. So I think, you know, it's pretty clear from the state's position that they're not going to recognize anyone that Raspeler brings in, certainly not Blue Lotus, and they're not going to get approvals from the agencies of the state without going through the RFP process. So what I'd like to urge on you is to direct the, you know, the manager and our staff to continue to pursue a default and termination, because this project is not being in any way performed in any sense of the word, certainly not in good faith. There was a, when the town manager provided a copy of the DECD letter to some of the people that comprise, you know, MOSA, he said that he was going to be seeking a direction from the council. I kind of thought that it might be on the agenda tonight. I assume that at some point, perhaps at a committee of the whole, the council will be discussing this with staff and the manager. I don't think there's any course that is available to the town, other than continuing to press the fact that this developer is in default, that we need to terminate this agreement. He's not going to be performing. If you recall, he had a lease for the property, which, as part of it, he was given the payments that were being made for cell towers on it, with the idea that he would spend that money on maintenance of the property. The state terminated the lease because he didn't do any maintenance, didn't do any of the things they expected, and he just pocketed the money. So I just, I don't think there, there isn't one scintilla of performance that could be pointed to. So I'd like to urge you to provide the direction. You're the council. You oversee the affairs of the town. Let, you know, our council, our attorneys, our staff know that it's time to end this. And if we're going to ever develop Mystic Oral School, we need to go through another RFP, perhaps be a little more careful about how we vet people. But I think it's pretty clear that we have the wrong developer and frankly, the wrong project for this property. It's just, you know, it doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
So thank you, and I appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you. Next I have Bonnie Knoll.
I'm here. I'm sorry.
You have the floor.
I'm trying to get off my other mic. My name's Bonnie Knoll, and I live at 41 Pearl Street, Mystic, Connecticut. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to speak on the proposal to have a mediator help the town council. There's eight Democrats and one Republican, and I was a town councillor several years ago with the exact same balance, but there were eight Republicans and one Democrat. All the Republicans on my town council did not share the same views for most issues. We were commonly split four to four with the one Democrat influencing the vote. Regardless of our differences, and we really did have many, we were civil and respectful. That is lacking in this council, so much that you are unable to perform the duties you were elected to do, the town's business. It's so awful, I can't stand to watch or participate in attendance these meetings. If you can't perform and be civil to each other, please resign instead of adding mediation to my tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I've been listening with great interest to all these comments. There are a couple of things, I'll start with the minor stuff, which is the NIPS and Kelly's problem with the lights of the house across the street shining. The NIPS problem came up years ago. Nobody's done anything about it. I mean, this is ridiculous. You could easily outlaw them, and if people like their NIPS so much, let them save the last 10 ones that they buy and refill them with a regular bottle and just use those and not throw them out on the street. You have to do something about that. There are so many things because you're dealing with issues which you don't understand that gets very complicated, like the data center and the Raspeler property and the Airbnbs and all these other things that we're fighting about right now. You're not doing the things that are obvious that a council would do. You should have a light ordinance. Kelly, to me, my heart goes out to her, and I'm afraid for her, because I don't know if you just read about that guy who had a fender bender with a woman who took a picture of his license plate, and he tried to chase her down with his SUV in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and he almost ran her over. He was, he was trying to kill her. This, to me, is, this lighting is terrifying. Nobody, and she came here, I heard her weeks ago talk about it. You all haven't done a thing about it. You should have had a referral immediately as to not only sending the police out there to do their job, which is tell these guys that they can't terrify this woman across the street. I mean, it would have been easy for the police to do that. They didn't do that. Next thing is to get a light ordinance out there as soon as possible, and, you know, show that you're on her side, because she's not in good shape right now with these neighbors across the street. So you don't do the simplest things like that. The mediator thing, I'm absolutely mortified about, like everybody else. When I saw that, and, you know, as you know, I have 20 years of experience in politics in this town, and in fact, John Scott was here, whom I've had ups and downs with for the last 20, practically the last 20 years, and whatever, I can't remember what he said here tonight. He was right about the mediator thing. He then said something else, which I totally disagreed with, and I laughed, because actually, I'm having a call with him tomorrow about something I want to work with him on. And so, you know, I get on really well with John, even though we've been on the opposite side of things. Same as Harry's on the RTM now, Harry Watson, and I used to jokingly call him the enforcer when I was on the council with him. You know, he kind of scared me, but I learned so much from him. Your problem, and this is what you have to face, you are all extremely green. When this council was elected, Patrice was the only one with, and Leon with some kind of experience, but you didn't have council, and you didn't have the kind of spillover we normally have, is that the half of previous council gets elected and then there's a bunch of new people come in, and the previous council, it's a sort of a tacit thing, that the previous council educates the new members of the council. That's what happened to me when I got on the council, you know, and I wanted everything my way, and I was upset when people didn't agree to what I wanted and what's things that I wanted really badly, and sometimes I was the only one, and one time somebody, I can't remember, raped me or they did something, they, anyway, they did something that was upsetting. So, but I would always walk out of there thinking, oh gee, you know, so-and-so did this to me, so-and-so did that, but I would laugh about it, because I really wanted to work with them to solve problems. It's clear to the whole town that you guys have got such personal animosity, and if I could name names, I would. I did actually in the comment that I made in the London Day, you know, and a lot of it has to do with feelings about Portia. I heard somebody say she was the troublemaker. Thank God she's the troublemaker, because you all went right along with the Raspeler deal. You don't question anything staff says. There's a bunch of you on that side, you're going to go along with staff and agree with everything staff says, everything John Burt says, but what you don't realize is you're not doing the town a favor. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here all night, time after time with the town council, trying to fight for what you should be doing correctly, and you're not doing it.
Thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, you know, I wish Betsy was sitting next to Juan.
Thank you.
That would be much better than a mediator, as whoever suggested that, because even Juan is new at this.
Thank you.
And I like what he's doing. I like most of you, but, you know, let Betsy give you some guidance. Go sit with Betsy or go talk to her individually.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Okay, just give me one more second. Portia is not the problem. Portia has actually saved this town by bringing us, by giving us hope, us activists, and bringing us out, and basically giving us the feeling that at least there's one person there. And now with Andre, there's two, but there's one person there who's listening to us and doing the right thing for us.
Thank you.
The data center thing was a mitigated disaster. You guys, the rest of you hardly did anything, except finally, the two of you did come around. But really, you need to...
Thank you. Your time has expired.
And you need to stop being jealous of Portia. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I've reached the end of my list. If there's...
Roseanne Katsouski is waiting to speak.
Roseanne Katsouski, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'm on the telephone, so I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Roseanne Katowski, twenty-four Ann Avenue. Been quite a night. I have a few things to bring up. The first is regarding the Mystic Earl School mega-development disaster. I know that you've all read the excellent letter Attorney McCauser sent you on Saturday. Unfortunately, this project has been closed in secrecy since 2016. Allowing the mediation to continue in secret with Blue Lotus involved, as the letter outlines, creates even more concern. It is past time for the town council to terminate the development agreement with Respru and end mediation. I believe that the council will be discussing this matter next week. Please do not have the conversation in secret in executive sessions. Please have the conversation in public. Then, there must be accountability for the town staff that got the town into this mess in the first place. Hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars were spent on their salaries, lawyers, consultants, studies, much that was done in secret, to move forward a project that the community does not and will never support. Hopefully, the staff will be replaced and never be involved with development projects on behalf of Groton residents again. Next, the RFP process update. Recently, the town council created a committee to update the request for proposal process. I think this is a very good idea and would like an update on the status of the committee. Establishing this committee is an important first step in providing the citizens of Groton oversight and transparency, which is lacking in our current RFP process. Again, the town council must govern with the attitude and awareness that Groton residents are more invested in the development of our community than town staff. Last, regarding the town council babysitter oops mediator proposal. Council Parker, who proposed the mediator, seems to be frustrated with the behavior of this dysfunctional town council, and understandably so. But this is a terrible, terrible idea, and the council should not support it. If any of you on the town council do not want to get along with your fellow councilors, then get off the council. It's that simple. In other words, if you can't play nice in the sandbox, get out of the sandbox. One more point about the babysitter oops mediator. We're supposed to believe that the town budget is bare bones and not below it, right? Then specifically, what line item will the babysitter oops mediator funding come out of? Or will the town councilors pay for it themselves? Taxpayers should never have to pay for something so wasteful, immature, and ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak at citizen's petitions, please approach the podium.
Chantey Duzant still has her head up.
Okay. I have someone from, in person.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Jean-Claude Amboise, one sixty-nine Shenacostet Parkway. First, a disclaimer. I like to speak tonight as a resident, and the commentary that I am claiming does not represent any organization I am otherwise connected with. First and foremost, the line item that's been discussed already, mediator two zero two two dash two one five. For clarification purposes, this is going to be a cost of nearly thirty, three hundred dollars an hour, which will now be taken out of contingency for next year. So it hasn't even been budgeted for. We've already, I think, spent about a hundred and sixty-six based on the meeting that was brought up yesterday about contingency, and RTM already reduced this line item to three hundred thousand dollars. So we're already behind the eight ball. Also, to be clear, that you making the decision to have a mediator will not require an RTM vote, if I'm not mistaken, because as of now, the purchase for this mediator has not exceeded ten thousand dollars, which would end up in contingency. If we were going to decide to look and use a mediator, which again, the public has already said what they had to say, accountability and transparency is essential. A couple of people that are no longer in this room have brought this up. But again, the gaslighting and the projection is definitely wrong. One thing of note that I wanted to bring up is that there's been a couple of meetings where I saw some unethical, a little moral questionable behavior. First and foremost, meeting March twenty-second, it was a special meeting to discuss the discussion about having the Respru agreement. Again, I have no for or against on this, I have nothing to do with, but at the six-minute ten mark, all of a sudden, you see someone in the right-hand corner of the screen, so go watch it on YouTube public, you see someone identified as RTM member, District Three, Ian Thomas, nodding his head and giving out hand signals to a member of this council, i.e. the person that he is married to, Portia Bordelon. I would have put that aside if I didn't see a pattern exist the next day. The next meeting was on three twenty-four, and at one point during the meeting, during the first time that this membership had the ability to debate the data center agreement, we see that same member go up and whisper in the ear of the town manager. The question that I have is, does this individual have privileged access more than anyone else sitting in this room, where they have the ability to coach or possibly bend the ear of somebody? That is highly suspicious, and at the very least, I wanted to bring it up to the public for the record. And at most, I would like to see the Rules and Procedures Committee refer this to whether I, to substantiate or substantiate the claims. Either way, this needs to cease and desist. We voted for one person, not two. Going on to the mediator kind of ties together with another item on your agenda today, two zero two two dash one nine eight, fourth quarter transfers. Mr. Thomas had brought it up, so I'll just re-stake that claim. Yes, it is about the primary. Twenty-five thousand dollars, that's what it's costing us, okay? It's costing us to have about a thousand people come out and vote. Only that Democrats could vote. No unaffiliated, no Republicans. All of us are paying that bill, and I'm not happy about it. It was an unprecedented election. The last time there was a primary was the nineteen sixties, and it was actually a full slate. So we did this for one person, or one person to be excluded on that. I'm definitely not for it. And again, yes, I'm noticing that it is getting personal around here. Everybody sees it, all right? But I'm the one that's coming out here and telling you that it's personal, okay? It's personal because they did not vote for this person in the town committee. It's personal because they did get on, and maybe it was a little fractured, I get it. But what I keep seeing is a pattern. The pattern of the people that do not support one person's or two people's claims always end up turning out to be a little on the other side. For example, planning and development requested a decrease by Council Bordelon, I believe Councilor Baumgartner as well. Beautification, nine thousand dollars, a good program that's working, voted down by Council Bordelon. I don't see the purpose of that. The one thing I am going to claim is thank you, as a longtime advocate for public safety, thank you to Mayor Melendez, Baumgartner, Casari, Franco, Jones, McBride, Parker, and Westervelt for voting for our police budgets. One cannot be supportive of Town, City, and Groton Long Point Police and the services they provide without supporting the necessary funding to do their professional services for all of us. And then there's one last thing, all right? Enough with the tattletaling to the day, okay? Anytime that this group has a temper tantrum and they don't get their way, and they're on the minority side of it, guess what we find? A commentary article by none other than Dave Collins. And again, the most recent one we had alludes to the fact, yet again, that members of this group are racist. So I want to know, why don't you put it out in the public? For everyone being able to talk all the time and ask the tough question, here's the question for you. Do you think that people on this council are racist? I'd love to hear that answer. All right? There is plenty of blame pie to go around. However, if all of us on this council need to take a bite, all right? Some a big bite, some a small bite, okay? However, if the council lacks the awareness and are unwilling to take that bite, nothing's going to happen. You're never going to move forward, and we're never going to do what's right for all of us. So please, get it together.
I believe Chantey Duzant wants to speak from online.
Hi again, everyone. Chantey Duzant, twenty-eighth and Hale, District Two. So I want to make this really short. There's been a lot said tonight. What I do particularly want to address is the fact that there, we want to get a mediator involved in the problems that are going on between our council members. And I resonate a lot, and what I've heard the same regardless, is that residents do not want a mediator, but what they do want is for our council members to get along or resign. I haven't been part of all of this for a very long time. Within the last year, I have been popping in and out, and I started to recently get involved. And I can tell from my perspective what I have seen and heard, and there is a lot going on. There is a sense that there is not unity within our council members and the Democratic Party, which is a huge surprise to me as a person that just started coming in to wanting to be part of this town and get involved. I was almost so dissatisfied with what I had seen and heard that I almost wanted nothing to do with anything. And I wonder how many people within the last year or two have wanted to join, have wanted to make a difference, have wanted to make their voices heard, and has been appalled at what they have seen and or hear going on. Now, I know there's been a lot of disagreement. I follow the meetings as well. I see a lot of different perspectives, different opinions, and yes, we do not all get along. But what I have heard a lot of, and from listening to many council members speak during the elections and everything, and in particular, Counselor Baumgartner and Counselor Bordelon, I have repeatedly heard them to offer their support, wanting to put differences aside, whatever they are, which I personally do not know. And I feel like whatever this is at this point, if we're getting a mediator, this needs to be transparent. But I have really heard them stressed at almost every other meeting that they just want to put things aside and they want to work together. And it surprises me, because in the council, we have eight Democrats, one Republican, and I, as a new member, do not understand why we're not getting along. And so, no, there shouldn't be any taxpayer money spent on a mediator. I think that there have been council members that have reached out repeatedly, that have asked, that have begged practically to want to work together. Just because someone has a different opinion does not mean that they're oppositional, does not mean that they're causing a problem. Everyone is entitled to their freedom of speech, their perspective, their opinion. But what is important is that all of that should be respected, and not only in what we say and what we do, but body language, all right? That speaks very highly, especially for people being online, looking at the council members tonight. Body language is very pertinent right now, and it speaks volumes. And I just want to say that if we do move forward with a mediator, I am hoping and I expect complete transparency on what the problem was, how it evolved, and the people that are held responsible for this. Because we should all be working for the town of Groton, not for egos and not for self-interest, not for alliances, for the residents of Groton. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Well, I think I'm the last one to speak, so you're probably all really thrilled. Susan Dowling, twenty-two Leewood Lane. Thank you, council members, Clerk Ms. McCauser, and attendants. I debated whether or not to speak this evening. I really don't like to criticize individuals, and you're all volunteers, you all dedicate your time to the town, and I know there's some issues, but I thought it'd be important that I speak. I wanted to speak primarily to address the town council plan to hire a mediator to help facilitate meetings of the council. I'm not sure if it's unprecedented for the town council or any governing body in the town of Groton to require assistance in their elected roles. I'm sure it was in good faith that members arrived at this decision. The role of the town council is to represent all residents and taxpayers in town of Groton and deliberate any issues that come before them and discuss, debate, and most importantly, compromise to arrive at the best decision on behalf of those that you represent. The town's rule of procedure, which I have here, clearly states how the town council conduct themselves at all times during council meetings. I'm certain that following those rules would help the council navigate any and all businesses, business that comes before them in order to fulfill their responsibilities. I don't feel that hiring a mediator would be prudent based on the cost of our budgetary constraints. With the increase in taxes potentially this year, it would be hard to justify this expenditure, especially where we have capable members that run for public office yourselves, and with the expectation to work together. I recommend the town council reconsider their plan to hire a mediator and instead work together to do the people's work respectfully. And thank you very much for your volunteer.
Thank you. Okay. Any other speakers here? Please approach the podium online. Please raise your hands. All right, seeing none. So we'll move on to response to citizens' petitions, comments and concerns. In accordance with Freedom of Information Act rules, responses to citizens' petitions will be limited to asking clarifying questions with no further elaboration or opinion to be given.
Excuse me, Mayor, may I have, ask a question?
Yep. What's your question?
I was wondering if we could at least take a five-minute recess.
Sure. We'll be back at nine thirty. Recession at nine twenty-five.
From recess at nine forty. Okay, so it is nine forty and we have a very long agenda, so I'm just gonna skip a good portion of this because we have grants to do and they're time sensitive and we need to get through the whole, we need to get through the things that we need to get through. So first I have sort of a public service announcement of a road closure that the Town of Groton Police Department just posted. It says, please be advised that there is a significant water main break on Paquannic Road in front of Pizza Palace and the Groton Shoppers Mart Big Y. The water main break is causing significant flooding on the roadway. Paquannic Road is completely shut down at Long Hill Road west of the break and at Laurel Wood Road east of the break. Drivers are cautioned to seek alternate routes of travel. Groton Utilities is en route and will be working on the issue throughout the night. Thank you. Okay, so we will be skipping through responses to citizens petitions. And we will now recess the Cal meeting at...
Council meeting.
The council meeting at nine forty-one.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
I just think that the amount of people coming out tonight, that if anybody wanted to ask a clarifying question...
I understand, that's not...
Blocking that piece out would just kind of diminish what everyone just came out and spoke. So I just would advise, not being oppositional, stating my case, I would advise that you do not skip that part. I think that's not fair or transparent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to call the Tuesday, May third, 2022 Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting to order at nine forty-two. All councils are present. Onto new business, polling location changes, page two. Okay, so we have no action from, from, no formal motion, but we just need a consensus from the council on this. And we have our registrar voters here, Kristin Venditti, as well as our town clerk, Betsy McCauser.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Venditti, registrar voters. We have two polling locations that we would like to change the location, the first being District Two, which was West Side moved to Zbierski House. We were told we could not hold the polling location at the new school originally because of parking. However, we have worked with the Board of Education and we are trying to preempt school being in session at the same time as an election, even a primary. So they are going to work with us on that. We're gonna work in the future. So there won't be a problem with parking on Election Day. So we would like to move that back to the West Side location, now known as the Thames River Magnet School. We should not have a problem, like I said, with parking, especially this year, because the primary is in August and the schools are closed for every November election. The other location is District Six, SB Butler School has closed. That building is in question. So in working with the Board of Education, we would like to move that to the former Cutler site, which is now the Mystic River Magnet School. The Board of Education is well behind that thought. It is still within the polling district. We tried to find another location that was closer to where it originally was, but none of them have worked out. So we would like to move that to the former Cutler Middle School site. So if you guys, I wanted to bring it to your attention and get agreement from you or anything you might have to say about it before we make it official and publicize it to the public.
Thank you. Councilboard along?
Thank you. I think this is, I can speak for the, as it was stated tonight, the former West Side Middle School, now Thames River Magnet. I think it's a great option. I think the facilities there are newer. Zaberski House is a very old building, very little lavatories, and it is handicap accessible, but it's not the easiest, and it's a no-brainer to put it here where a brand-new building that we spent a lot of money on, and it allows for better access, I think, for voters. I do have concerns. I, again, you know, with the move, moving it to the Mystic River, I think that's another great building, but I am curious to see what the folks that live over by SB Butler, what they may say. A lot of folks over there do walk, but, I mean, if they're in support of it, I would support it. But I, I think the only way this is gonna work is with proper signage, starting like immediately this week, like getting this list in the paper. FYI, you know, council just agreed upon, and stating clearly which ones moved, stating clearly which roads, a list of roads, what road sections are being impacted. With more information to come, telling people to go to like social media websites and page for more information. But I think it's very, very important that we find longstanding polling stations, because the goal would be not to keep switching them around. So if this is the change we're going to have, it's great to kind of have it stick. But I do think that the outreach, the mailers, and social media, we really have to start getting the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bumgardner?
Yes, just like to state on the record my appreciation for the registrar voters accommodating, I think, these requests. A lot of folks tonight opined on their desire to change the voter precincts, but also I would note that five of our eight polling places are buildings maintained by the school district. So this is a partnership, it's a collaboration, and so they too are accommodating this request. So I want to thank the superintendent and the Board of Education for partnering with our great registrars and the town to make this happen, so all voters have newer and more centrally located voter locations. Thank you.
Just a reminder, this is a committee of the whole meeting, so the council has to... No, nothing. It's just, never mind. Sorry. I just ate my own words. No, they don't have to.
Okay. So we just need the consensus for the council that they want to move forward in this direction. I'm in favor, two...
I'm in favor.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next we have three B, Town Council Mediator. Just gonna skip right by that. Onto Small Cities Community Development Block Grant.
Page eight.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing Town Manager John Burt to execute all necessary forms to apply for and receive CDBG funds on behalf of the Groton Housing Authority, Grosso Gardens, so moved.
Second, Bumgardner.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bumgardner. Okay. I don't know if Manager Burt has anything to say on this, or Director Reiner. All right. Any discussion from the council? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously, nine in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. Onto three D, Neighborhood Assistance Act, 2022. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the proposals for the Bill Memorial Library, Community of Hope, Oddfellows Home, DBA Fairview, Riverfront Children's Center, and Sacred Heart School for the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act, so moved.
Second, Bumgardner.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bumgardner. Any discussion from the council? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously, nine in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Melendez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The Cal is adjourned at nine fifty.
I guess it's too late to ask what happened, are we not gonna talk about the meeting thing? Can we just give that up?
And I thought we had a vote on changing the order of the agenda. Other times before, we've always voted...
Okay, just let me take the floor real quick. We're actually not in a meeting right now, because we're still in recess. So I will reconvene the council meeting at nine fifty. Okay, real quick, we are not changing the order of the agenda. So there is no vote that needs to be taken. We are just skipping past items on the agenda.
Point, just a clarifying point, just so I can understand and keep track of what we're doing here.
Mm-hmm.
Once again, not casting any judgment, simply asking, under the last section here, special meeting agenda, we skipped the mediator, but there was just no explanation as to why we were skipping it. You just hashed it out on your agenda and moved on to other items. That's the order in which I'm asking, well, how we are allowed to just skip the order.
It's up to my discretion, and for time, this is not a time-sensitive thing. Other things are time-sensitive, so I'm gonna prioritize the time-sensitive things. Thank you. Onto the consent calendar. Okay. Make a motion to approve the consent calendar consisting of various appointments, reappointments, April, April fifth, twenty twenty-two minutes, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting minutes, and the special trust fund contributions, April. Moved by Melendez.
Second, Casiri.
Seconded by Casiri. Councilboard along?
Yes, under the meeting minutes, under public comment, they list out everybody who spoke. Let me get my page, since we're skipping around, I lost my spot, I was in order. It's page two...
Which meeting, which meeting? I'm sorry.
March sixteenth, page two, which is actually page thirty-eight. More than seventeen people spoke. There's a ton of people missing that aren't identified on here.
Yeah, I have everybody in my...
More than seventeen, correct?
I'd have to go back, because...
Yeah, because I know for one, like Ian Thomas spoke, that one's not on there, and many others, so I, that needs a revisit.
I will look at it and add the people, thanks.
Because there was literally, from my notes, there were like thirty people in person and about twenty online.
I'll, I'll, I'll put them in.
So you're gonna amend these?
Oh, absolutely.
And you'll resend this out to the council in an email?
If you need them, sure.
I'm sorry?
If you need them, yes.
Yeah, I just would like to see the updated, the other, so there's a large omission there of folks that spoke.
Just make sure. See what else I have, sorry.
The description of how, even though we talked about this in Great Lake, that it will not be a dissertation, and the notes, the minutes would reflect what has happened, under the section where we did the appointments, it doesn't really capture really what has happened in its entirety, like in a clear statement. That's just my opinion. I think it, I don't know, I questioned looking at that and maybe rewording it a little bit to really articulate what has happened.
I think that it's very important that we keep in mind that these meetings are recorded and forever they will be available. It's not just, like, my books can disappear, but the online is there forever. And so FOI requires specific things about, about minutes, and I can review what you're talking about, but I believe it's still, it is in concert with FOI.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not debating that it's not, Madam Clerk, I think it is in concert.
And I think some of the things are very...
It's just, it's just if you quickly glance this, it should just reflect, even though it's online, just like I was saying, this, only seventeen names in writing. Not everybody can see or watch TV. So like, we have to consider all sources when you think of folks, folks that have hearing impairment, visual impairment. That's why it's important to have multiple ways of logging this.
Well, they can't read these minutes either, if those impairments...
Right.
But the point, it's points taken, and I will review what exactly you're talking about and, you know, discuss it with you further if we need to.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Council Franco?
Thank you. I had noticed that the Long Term Recovery...
Is it on?
There you go.
Yeah, it's on now.
It's on now. All right. I had noticed that on consent calendars, that some of the things that we've pushed through for members of the council, I haven't seen the reappointments of anybody from the Long Term Recovery Committee publicly notated, and nor have I seen anything come through for the Permanent Rules Committee, and that hasn't been announced.
I'm sorry, what was that?
There was a whole list in there.
The Long Term Recovery Committee has, I have not seen reappointments for that committee. So...
Right.
From what I'm gathering, that there's, the people that are still serving are from the appointments from the previous mayor. And then the Permanent Rules Committee, I haven't seen anybody that publicly announced of who will be on that committee either.
Right, yeah, so Long Term Recovery, just, no new appointments were made, so those are, those are the same as they were last time.
Are you, well, you have to appoint people, because otherwise the last mayor appointed them.
The appointments stay the same until there's new appointments made, so just chose to leave, leave it the same. That's precedent, right?
Okay. And the Permanent Rules Committee?
Right, yeah. I'll be putting up Permanent Rules Committee soon.
Okay, thank you. One more thing in the minutes. It is our page thirty, and as was stated, it was under committee reports with the personnel and appointments. I had made a notation of something I wanted on the record, and it's not on the record in that section. So if you could put that on the record, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Call for a vote on the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All abstain.
That carries eight in favor, zero oppose, one abstaining. Board along. Okay, we're gonna skip past communication reports, committee reports. Onto new business, page forty-eight, FYE 2022, fourth quarter transfers.
I can read it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to recommend a resolution for FYE 2022, fourth quarter transfers, whereas the town charter provides for supplemental appropriations to adopted budgets and transfers from the contingency function during the year, and whereas the town charter also provides for the transfer of funds from one departmental function to another departmental function during the last three months of the fiscal year, and whereas transfers are necessary and represent unforeseen or unexpected expenditures at the time the FYE 2022 budget was adopted, now therefore be it resolved that transfers totaling one thousand and, one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars be transferred from contingency account ten ninety-four to the following general fund departments functions and refer to the RTM for approval. Voter registration, one zero zero three zero seven, five one zero three, and the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars for Democratic primary expenses. Legal services, one zero zero six zero zero, five two nine zero, and the amount of fifty thousand dollars for delinquent taxes and outside opinions. And human resources, one zero one two zero zero, five one zero nine, and the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars for accumulated leave due for two retirements, I assume.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Franco. Discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously, nine in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. Onto Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, page forty-nine. I believe we can just read the resolved here.
You should read the...
Read the whole thing?
It's an, it's not an ordinance.
I'm sorry.
This is a resolution, so you can read the title and then the resolve.
Read the title. Resolution authorizing the submission of a small cities community development block grant application for Groton Housing Authority, Grosso Gardens.
You do have to read the whole thing, because you have to say everything that's being done, yeah.
Okay. Whereas federal monies are available under the Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, forty-two, USC, Section five three zero one, et sec, as amended, also known as Public Law ninety-three dash three eight three, and administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development as the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. And whereas pursuant to Connecticut, pursuant to Chapter one twenty-seven C and Part six of Chapter one thirty of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to disperse such federal monies to local municipalities, and whereas the Town of Groton wishes to provide financial assistance to the eligible public housing provider to upgrade their residential buildings, making them decent, safe, and sanitary, and whereas the Town of Groton conducted public hearings to receive citizen comments on housing and community development needs, prioritizing public housing modernization as a, as a community need, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest of the Town of Groton, make application to the state for two million dollars in order to undertake a small cities community development project and to execute an assistance agreement, therefore, should one be offered. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Groton, one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Part six of Chapter one, one thirty of the Connecticut General Statute, and two, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the Town of Groton in an amount not to exceed two million dollars is hereby approved, and that John Burt, Town Manager, is hereby authorized and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Housing to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, recessions, and revisions thereto, to implement project activities if approved, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Groton, and to execute any other agreement or contract relative to said project. Three, that it adopts or has adopted on behalf of the Town of Groton a policy to support the following non-discrimination agreements and warranties provided in subsection AJ of Connecticut General Statutes, Section four A dash sixty, and four A dash sixty A, respectively, as amended by Public Act zero seven dash one four two, and for which purposes the contractor is the Town of Groton and contract is said assistance agreement, as amended by Public Act zero seven dash one four two, and for which purposes the contractor is the Town of Groton and contract is said assistance... ...to blindness unless it is shown by such contractor that such disabilities, disability prevents performance of the work involved. The contractor agrees and warns that in the performance of the contract, such contractor will not discriminate or permit discrimination against any person or group of persons on the grounds of sexual orientation in any manner prohibited by the laws of the United States or of the State of Connecticut, and that the employees are treated when employee, and that employees are treated when employee without regard to their sexual orientation, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Councilboard along?
I know you guys probably don't like this, but I'm having a little bit of trouble with one of the words, mental retardation. The new term that they use now is intellectually, an intellectual disability. You know, the word mental retardation is something that the state really doesn't use anymore for many reasons.
This, this, this contract did come from the state, so maybe it was before that was changed. I don't know.
I don't know, I just, I don't know if anyone else can speak to it, but the proper term nowadays is to say intellectual, intellectual disability. And that's an appropriate way to address people...
I think you're not gonna hold this up for that, are you?
I don't know if Town Manager's on?
He's, I don't know if he's still on. I can't, my computer just said, "Goodnight."
Hey, mine, but we have both Paige and John here. Paige is probably the appropriate person.
Hi, this is Paige Frog. We are providing that language by the state for approval.
That's right.
Okay, if that's the case, I just, maybe they have it...
I understand the point, it's a valid point.
Can you double-check it to make sure after, before it goes?
No, this has gotta be approved.
Because there could be something that was, it might be an... Because there could be something, it might be an oversight on their part as well.
You can check it.
Some of the language is old, and they just, they kind of keep stamping it, and they don't go back and revise it. Thank you.
I'm sure of that, but nonetheless, we're required to appropriately provide for this.
Thank you.
But we will reach out, we can reach out, though, and just write it by him.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. We have to approve what they can.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. All right, on to Neighborhood Assistance Act 2022, Page 51. I make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals for the Bill Memorial Library, Community of Hope, Odd Fellows Home, DBA Fairview, Riverfront Children's Center, and Sacred Heart School, whereas the Town of Groton has received proposals from the Bill Memorial Library, Community of Hope, Odd Fellows Home, DBA Fairview, Riverfront Children's Center, and Sacred Heart Schools for the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act, and whereas the Town of Groton Department of Planning and Development Services received a proposal from each of these entities to achieve tax credit savings on energy efficiency and energy conservation projects, and whereas the Town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services supports the proposals from each of these entities and acknowledges that the post-program review will be their responsibility, and whereas the Town Council held a public hearing on the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act applications on May 3, 2022, and whereas the Town of Groton Town Council supports the proposals from each of these entities, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby approves the proposals for the Bill Memorial Library, Community of Hope, Odd Fellows Home, DBA Fairview, Riverfront Children's Center, and Sacred Heart School for the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act, so moved.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Counsel Board along?
I'm just going to repeat again, as I did the last several years, I think these are great organizations, but I had stated, if we could cast that net a little wider, and I thought that we'd get, you know, some new names as a result. So my hope for Groton is that we look to seek other agencies now, so that next year other agencies can partake, and not the same agencies year after year after year. Even though they're great, I think it's important to make sure we're not missing other folks in need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Going to skip past the adoption of an ordinance to establish a property tax payment for surviving spouses of fallen emergency workers, on to...
Wait. It's ARPA.
Oh, it's ARPA next, okay. Thank you. American Rescue Plan coronavirus.
Can we just read the resolved? Or do we have to read the whole thing?
You can just read the resolve on this, yeah.
Can be found on Page 52.
53. Resolution authorizing recognition of and accepting the American Rescue Plan Final Rule Standard Allowance for Revenue Loss and establishing six community recovery buckets as a framework to allocate coronavirus state and local recovery funds. Whereas, I mean, resolved that the Groton Town Council shall accept the standard allowance as authorized by the American Rescue Plan Final Rule to recognize the entirety of the Town of Groton's coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds under the revenue loss eligible use category, and resolved that the Town of Groton Town Council will allocate under unencumbered funds while reserving 1.4 million for the City of Groton Sewall project in case needed, consistent with a proposed needs assessment for future allocation to each bucket category via an application and review process with the application issuance phase to begin May of 2022. May be further resolved that the Groton Town Council does establish six community recovery buckets as a framework for allocating the Town of Groton's coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds towards eligible proposals for community improvements and programming. I so move.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Casiri. Any discussion? Counsel Board along?
I just wanted, the Town Manager or whoever could address the 1.4 million that's being set aside for a sewall.
The, it's not being allocated, it's just being set aside in case needed, which was the recommendation at the Capitol. But it's not, if the council wanted to actually allocate it, it would take another vote of the council.
So this is just added in here, but we'd have to vote again anyway? So we're basically earmarking 1.4?
Basically...
Are we earmarking 1.4 million? Like, we're just earmarking it, but it still has to be voted on?
Putting it aside in case needed.
But it would still have to be voted on?
Yes.
I just don't really feel comfortable with that line. It's not that I'm saying I'm for or against the sewall. I think when it comes up to vote, we could talk about it. I'm just a little concerned about just setting aside money, and then we have to vote on it again anyway. I just, I don't like earmarking money ahead of time like this, and really, I don't know, I, without a full backstory, it, I just don't feel comfortable with it. I feel comfortable with, you know, I'm not saying I don't think we should support it. I think we should deal with that at the time come. What's the benefit of setting it aside now, Town Manager?
Well, what was discussed at Cal is so that when you go out with applications and just solicit applications, that it's known that you're, until it's, that you're not going to just give that 1.4 million as part of everything else right up front, until you know whether it's actually going to be needed for the sewall. And that's what the Cal had asked.
Yeah, I just, if there was a way that we, if I wanted to amend this and take that out, I could still do that at this time, is that correct, Town Manager?
Yes.
You can make a motion. It'll have to be seconded.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion just to strike that line.
Not seen a second.
Thank you. I, as was just stated, the 1.4 million dollars for the sewall was approved by us to be set aside and reserved, and the reason being is we were going to allocate it potentially using ARPA funds for the sewall, or we were going to wait and see if they could get other funding from either the federal or the state, and if they did receive that, they would not need the 1.4 million from the ARPA, and then the ARPA can, that 1.4 could be distributed in other ways. So it was just being reserved and held, and that was the word we gave them. So, I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of the standard allowance. Six community recovery buckets are good with me. I feel like most everything I thought of, and how it would go into which bucket, seems to be appropriate, and I think, I think we should just vote on it, because I'm in favor, just move it forward, because I am getting people that are definitely asking, when can we start applying? And the quicker we can get this stuff done, the further we can, the faster we can get applications moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Yes, thank you. I'm in favor of the 1.4, you know, reserve, not necessarily designated balance, and the reason being also, I think it shows good faith effort with Groton City, the City of Groton, that we're working with them on their budget proposal, because I don't think we want to run into any potential issues where we're saying we're not moving forward with their budget, because then they can bring up the state statute again and go back and say, because this was submitted in their budget package for roads. And I think that happened seven, eight years ago, and I think this would prevent that from potentially happening. So I think this is a good, good measure to move forward with without actually, without actually encumbering the funds.
Thank you. Counsel Board along?
Thank you. So if this money is set aside, and it's kind of being set aside particularly for the sewall, is it going to take another vote to release the funds if we don't decide to use it for the sewall? I know you said it would have to be voted on to be used for the sewall. What if the, what if all the funding comes in and the money's not used? What would we have to do after that?
It would take a vote of some sort, you know. One thing you could do is if you had, I'm sure you'll have applications for more than how much funding is available, and let's say at that point you knew the city had come up with alternative funding, you could recommend, you know, moving forward with extra, those dollars for other projects. So one way or another, you'd have to do some sort of vote, or you could just do a vote to release it. I mean, there's several options.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, just to clarify, because I just, I think we need to be very careful with our verbiage, this money is not being earmarked, correct? Thank you. The majority of this conversation took place during the budget session, so if people at home have questions about it, I urge people to watch the city budget conversation. We're specifically waiting for the study, and I think that's why we went in the direction that we did with this. And also, we needed to show, because the mayor and Director Robarge is actively trying to seek grants, and we needed to show that we were willing to put some money towards this, and that was also part of that process. So I believe that is part of the reason why we went this way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. We're going to skip past 10-5, on to 10-6. Page 57, Adoption of an Ordinance Changing and Redefining Voting Districts.
Adoption of an ordinance changing and redefining the voting districts in the Town of Groton, being enacted by the Town Council of the Town of Groton, that Section 6-1 of the Code of Ordinances, voting districts consisting of ordinance numbers 105, 212, 217, 254, 278, adopted by the Town Council on October 2, 1972, February 18, 1992, March 2, 1993, July 2, 2022, and April 10, 2013, respectively, is hereby repealed, and the following ordinance is hereby enacted in lieu thereof. One, the following areas shall hereafter constitute the voting districts in the Town of Groton and are hereby adopted to conform to the 2021 Plan of Congressional Districting approved by the State of Connecticut Supreme Court on February 10, 2022, and published by the State of Connecticut Secretary of State, the State, on February 10, 2022, and to enact other changes to be made hereby the Groton Town Council pursuant to Town of Groton Charter 3-7. First voting district, beginning at the northeast corner of this voting district at a point at the intersection of the center line of Flanders Road and the center line of the southbound lane of Interstate Route 95, thence running southerly with the center line of Flanders Road to a point at its intersection with the center line of Fort Hill Road, US Route 1, thence running southerly and westerly...
Can I just stop you for one second, please? Sorry. So, Town Clerk, can he just read the changes?
Correct. You can go to 2, 3, 4, and 5, and then the resolve.
Even if it is an ordinance?
Yes.
All right. Foretold otherwise, secret stays here.
Because those are the actual, you were told otherwise?
I said, "Foretold otherwise, secret stays here."
No, 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 because you are reading the actual changes in 2, 3, 4, and 5.
All right, so I'll pick up from changes to District 1, 2. Yeah. All right. Changes to District 1, 2, I was looking forward to it, let's do that. Changes to District 1, Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4 have been made as required by the 2021 redistricting plan enacted by the State of Connecticut. By vote of Groton Town Council, portions of District 3 have moved to District 2. By vote of the Groton Town Council, portions of District 2 have moved to District 4.
1.
1 to 4.
1 to 4.
You said 2 to 4.
I'm sorry. By vote of the Groton Town Council, portions of District 1 have moved to District 4. Districts 5, 6, and 7 have not had any changes to their boundaries. Resolved that the Town Council furthermore authorizes the use of a description of the ordinance changing and redefining the voting districts in lieu of the complete text in the notice of adoption of the ordinance. Ordinance to be referred to the representative town meeting, so moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Franco. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On 2, okay. Oh, that should be it. Levin?
The, the...
No, we're just going to skip past 10-7. And other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Okay, so I believe that's 7 in favor, 2 opposed, Bumgardner.
Which one was opposed?
3 opposed, Bumgardner, Board along, Westerville. So that's 6 in favor. 3 opposed, Bumgardner, Board along, Westerville, 0 opposed, 0 abstaining. We adjourned at 10:23.